Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, October 5th Public Session of the Halton District School Board. I would like to thank everyone for coming tonight. It's going to be a great evening, starting off with Inspire Awards shortly, but I would like to call this meeting to order. I will note that Superintendent Cullen sends his regrets due to illness, but otherwise, I believe everyone else is here. I would like to ask that if you have something that makes noise, a telephone or something else, that if you could please silence it, it would be greatly appreciated. And I'd also like to remind everyone that this is broadcast live and video voice recorded. The Halton District School Board acknowledges and thanks the first peoples of this territory and other Indigenous peoples for sharing this land in order for us to continue our work Before we begin, I would like to thank the Blue Jays for playing last night so that everybody could be here and attend or watch via the telecast. And I would also like to acknowledge that this is a one-year anniversary for our director. So could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Trustee Gervent, seconded by Trustee Reynolds. All those in favor? That passes unanimously, thank you. Do we have any declarations of possible conflict of interest? Seeing none, we will now move on to our communications to the board. We have no delegations, as I referred to, we have some exciting presentations tonight. We have our first inaugural Inspire Awards. Tonight is the inaugural presentation of the Halton District School Board Inspire Awards. The Inspire Awards were created to honor people and groups who support the Halton District School Board students and their achievements. The Inspire Awards recipients have been nominated by peers, students, parents, or community members and organizations. These individuals and our groups are caring, innovative, and creative, and are exemplary in taking initiative to make a positive difference in the lives of our students. In this inaugural presentation of the Inspire Awards, 21 awards were granted. Tonight, we are honoring six individuals at this board meeting. The recipients who are not here this evening have elected to receive their awards at their schools or workplaces. Family and friends are invited to take photos during the presentation and afterwards are invited to meet their award recipient in the lobby. And I would like to ask the recipients to stay at the front after you've received your award so that a group photo can be taken with all of the award recipients. So I would like to ask Trustee Gervent to come up. And Trustee Gervent will be presenting to Nicole Hagley. If Nicole would like to come up. Nicole was nominated, and some of these attributes, these are the things that were shared about her. She cares deeply about students. She advocates for all, for the goal program. And there's great support for school, community, and many different avenues. I would like to ask Trustee Papin to come up, please. Trustee Papin will be presenting a few awards. The first award is to Howard Felsky. If Howard could please come forward. Some of the things that Howard was nominated for. He goes above and beyond inspiring students and staff, and he takes time to build the relationships with those students of any age. So thank you very much.[321.33][321.33](Applause) Congratulations. The next award is to Bill Gatipolis. If Bill could come up? Bill was nominated as an outstanding caretaker dedicated to his school and the students. He does so many things to make his school a beautiful place to be. Congratulations, Bill, and thank you for all you do.[351.31][351.31](Applause). The next recipient is Nick Lavalli. And some of the things that makes Nick special is he makes student safety and well-being a priority every day. He manages the Halton Food for Thought Program, and he is unfailingly approachable and a champion for all. Congratulations and thank you, Nick.[382.63][382.63](Applause). Could I ask Trustee Oliver to come up? Trustee Oliver will be presenting to Steve Filibasian. Some of the things about Steve that he was nominated for, where he inspires and cares for students and staff. He creates an exciting learning environment. He's very involved in running activities, and he has a passion for education. Thank you, Steve, and congratulations.[424.47][424.47](Applause). I would like to say congratulations to all of our Inspire recipients, and the director and I are going to come up and have a picture with the group. Thank you again to all of our Inspire winners, even if they're those that are here and those that are out in the system. Thank you. And just to let you know, the Inspire Awards are available for anyone to be nominated from the system. So if you go onto our website, www.hdsb.ca, and click on Inspire, and if someone in the system inspires you, please nominate them. Thank you very much. So we're now on to our minutes of the regular board meeting from September the 21st, 2016. Can I have a mover? Trustee Papin, seconded by Trustee Reynolds. Is there any discussion on the minutes from September the 21st? Trustee Daniele.
Thank you, and I could be wrong, but just on page five, under Trustee Comments, where our trustee Gay spoke about the Halton Learning Foundation, it says the gala is slated for October 10th, and I believe it's actually November. I said, "Thank you, sir."
Thank you very much. Is there any other...Trustee Harvey Hope?
Yes, although I may be preempting Trustee Gray from what she said, but under Committee Reports, just wanted to clarify that the selection committee is for a new public representative, and the interest is to the Chair of the Board. So just, that would have been a clarification, just in case. But I'm paraphrasing, Trustee Gray.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on the minutes of September the 21st? Trustee Harvey Hope?
Yet again, notice that the last comment under Trustee Questions and Comments, Trustee Gray talked about the Halton Learning Foundation Gala, and it should be November, not October.
That's what Trustee Daniele just mentioned. Thank you. Okay, seeing no further comments or questions, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, so we are now on to any business transacted in private session. Was there any business? There was nothing to bring forward today. Thank you. So we will now move to the order paper. Are there any comments or questions on our order paper tonight? Seeing none, moving right along. We're up to our action items. So our first action item is the Trustee Code of Conduct Revised, Director Miller, on Report 16137 on page 13 of your board package. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. The report's before you trustees, it's been here a couple of times, and it's been out to the public for comments, and there were no comments, so I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope?
Thank you. Just wanted to point out that I believe the only changes to the report were those that were bolded, but that's not highlighted in the overlay report that the changes are bolded. So I just wanted to make sure I knew that. And some of my requests for clarification were not included as far as definitions of associated, related, of those kinds of things, so I will just note them, and if they're going ahead without it, then I will follow it up at a later date. Because I got, I thought head nods at the time, but the changes aren't here. I also found, just a further request as usual, the, when we change it from, especially when it's this big, that what we, we actually are very clear on what changed from one week to the next, because I know in this case, we actually took two documents and put them together. And I did check that everything was in from one to the other, but it's, one shouldn't actually have to go through that level of detail in the second reading.
Through you, Chair Amos, to Trustee Harvey Hope, I believe that's what the bolding was.
Right, but it doesn't say that's what's changed. And so you sort of figure it out as you get to the bolding, "Oh, okay, maybe that's what's different."
Ah, okay.
But you, when you're looking for what's different, when you say it's a revised report, you don't know what, how to tell it, it's, because bolding isn't always...
Okay, yeah, we'll put a note next time, changes are in bold. Yep.
Thank you. So I'm now going to put the motion on the table. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board approved the Trustee Code of Conduct Policy as revised and appended to Report 16127. Moved by Trustee Cullen, seconded by Trustee Gray. Any further discussion? Seeing none? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And thank you to everyone involved for all the hard work that went, put into this document, because it's been a long time, and a long time coming. Thank you. So our next action item is the Weather Procedures Review. Trustees Gervent and Graves, Report 16126 on page 25 of your board package. Would one of you like to speak to the motion before I put it on the table? Trustee Gervent?
Sure, this motion is just to recognize that though we have cold weather procedures, we really do need to acknowledge that we have had some very hot days, both at the end of last year and the beginning of this year, and we should make sure that our procedures are taking that into account and what school should be doing.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Graves, did you want to add anything? Okay, then I'm going to put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board direct the Director of Education to investigate and undertake a gap analysis on existing procedures dealing with extreme weather, specifically heat guidelines, and report back to the board with any recommendations by April 2017 if required. Moved by Trustee Gervent, seconded by Trustee Oliver. Any further discussion? Seeing none? And that passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, so now we're on to the highlight of the evening, our student trustee reports.
Thank you, Chair Amos. First of all, I want to thank all the trustees and Mr. Boge who sent out emails to the schools in their region in order to get us names for Student Senate. We really appreciated that. As soon as those emails went out, we got more names, so we now have a very good selection and attendance of those student senators, so we're very happy about that. Secondly, our first Student Senate meeting is going to be next Tuesday, so that's October the 11th. We're currently in the process of planning that first meeting. Very briefly, it's going to be an overview of what we experience and plan to experience for this year, and we're really going to stress that students should be connecting with other students within their schools and their student councils to ensure that there is continuity and that they're representing the student voice within their communities.
So as Dasha said, we have a lot of candidates actually trickling in now, so that's really good. So we have a lot from Milton and Georgetown as well, from our outer areas. So because of this, we also went to deal with the issue that maybe some people might not be able to actually get transportation to come to our meetings. So we actually did get a software in place that will allow them to, either using their computers or their telephones, if they cannot attend a meeting or if they're too far, they can actually remotely join us. So we're really excited to try that out for this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for our student trustees tonight? Seeing none at this moment. Are you still missing some names from some of the schools? Could you maybe forward those schools to Associate Director Boge, and he will nudge them again to remind them that they need to get you the names of their representatives? Okay, that'd be great, thank you. All right, well, thank you very much for your report, and I know your Student Senate meeting is coming up, right? Next week? What time?
We have two times, so from 6:00 to 6:00 to 8:00 is the first one, and 7:00 to 9:00 is the second one. And we have that overlapping hour between primary and secondary students.
That's great, it'd be very exciting, first meeting. Okay, so we're now on to our action items for October the 19th. The first item, oh, sorry, I skipped by. Do we have any notices of motion tonight? See, I was reading everybody's mind there, wasn't I? Okay, so now we'll go to our action items for October the 19th. The first item, item 4.2.1, Adding Coding to the Ontario Curriculum. Trustee Gervent, Report 16140 on page 26 of your board package. Trustee Gervent?
Through you, Chair Amos. So this motion is to have the board write a letter to the ministry requesting that computer coding, otherwise known as computer programming, be added to the curriculum. It is part of the curriculum in several provinces and in many countries around the world, and it's, it's a little alarming actually that we're one of, we're not leading the pack with regards to bringing this as part of a basic skill for our students to have in the school system. Coding can be, be part of all sorts of other subjects within a school, and it also promotes organization and logistic, and all sorts of very positive things. And so that's why I wanted to bring this motion forward.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions regarding the Adding Coding to the Ontario Curriculum motion? Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say how pleased I am to see this motion coming to our table. Last week, I was at the Ontario Public School Board Association's Executive Committee, and at that committee, we received correspondence from that CC to us, from around the province to the minister, and I should let you know that this is becoming, we're hearing it from other boards as well. So I'm really, really pleased that you saw to bring it to this board. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Trustee Gray?
Thank you, through the chair. I'd like to echo Trustee Daniele's comments that we are in fact very pleased for this motion. I would just ask for clarification. Are you suggesting that a standalone course be developed or that this programming be embedded into right across the curriculum, no matter what coursework?
You, the coding could be, or computer programming could be, it could be done either way, actually. I think that you could leave it up to the experts to decide where it's appropriate to embed it as part of another part, another program. I believe at some point, you would need to kind of isolate it a bit, just to, you know, really get to the meat of it, but certainly, a lot of the concepts can be part of other subjects.
Thank you. Trustee Metropolansky?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that from the student perspective, I think this is a great idea, and I think a lot of students would support it. We would definitely, we definitely believe that it's a useful skill, coding and programming, especially because it promotes critical thinking and logical thinking. My one concern that I would bring up is, I'm not sure if it would be feasible, or if a lot of students would be interested in having it as a mandatory requirement in grades 11 and 12 particularly, because for those years especially, every course and every mandatory credit that you have to take, there's an opportunity cost to that. So even though for some students, it may be what they want to go into, if they want to go into computer science or programming, for other students, it might not be necessarily relevant to what they want to go into after school. So would it be possible to consider having it as mandatory or a part of a curriculum for, say, kindergarten to grade 10, and after that, just leaving it as an elective?
Trustee Gervent?
I value your voice in this, and I would, I would agree with you that I would be willing to adjust the motion to just go to grade 10.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope. Well, did the director want to speak?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Amos. I just, thank you, Trustee Gervent. Dasha, Trustee Metropolansky makes an excellent point. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope?
Thank you. I guess I'll be contrarian on this point. I think it should still be a mandatory element, but possibly not a mandatory course. The idea that to put it into the curriculum is to say it's in the curriculum, and it would be included in courses in the higher grades as a matter of course, because in a different way perhaps than calling it coding, but in order to continue the logic lessons and the logic concepts and all those kinds of things, and all of the different senior courses would be appropriate, but I agree, it would not, it would, should not be a mandatory data processing course in grade 11 or 12. But the idea of being an element of the curriculum and to incorporate it into, say, the senior business courses or the senior, even the English course on how one does it, could be a possibility.
Thank you. Did you want to respond to that, or is this...? Trustee Cullen?
I was actually just going to say almost exactly what Trustee Harvey Hope said. I think it's so easy to embed this element into math, science, English, all of the subject areas that students would take in grades 11 and 12. I would, I would leave your motion the way it is.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this motion, which comes back in two weeks? And I'd like to remind everyone that this would be a letter, and we could phrase it in such a way that we want it, the coding to be part of the curriculum, but it can be part of other subjects as well, so it's not necessarily as a course, so it can be, it depends, it's a letter, right? So we can share the information that we want. Thank you. Okay, so that will come back in two weeks. So our next item is our Program and Accommodation Review. Director Miller, Report 16132 on page 29 of your board package. Before we start, I would like to remind everybody that this is a report on undertaking an accommodation review. I know there is a suggestion in here of a possible outcome, but it's just a suggestion, and it is not the ultimate outcome that will be coming at the end. Our Program and Accommodation Review process, as you will hear, needs to start somewhere, and it, that's not what it's about. So the discussion here is about the actual process. I'll turn it over to the director.
Thank you, Chair Amos. Welcome, everybody, tonight, including the press. I'm going to take a few minutes as an introduction to this and a bit of a preamble prior to Senior Manager Renzella going through what the actual process is, but I do want to echo the words of Chair Amos, and I also want to quote someone rather more famous than either Chair Amos or myself. At the conclusion of the Battle of Britain, Winston Churchill said, "This is not the end. It is not even the beginning of the end, but perhaps it's the end of the beginning." And I think it's important for us to keep this in mind. This is not the end. This is the beginning of a process, and the process is to include public consultations to help us reach a better decision. The best decision, that's the optimal decision for the students there. So I want to talk a little bit because I, this is difficult for the Board of Trustees, it's difficult for the people around the table, around the outside, the superintendents. We all entered education because we support education of kids. We were all, many of us were teachers, vice principals, principals, and we worked with students. We wanted the best for students. The trustees put their names forward to make a difference in education. Nobody in this room put their names forward to close schools. Nobody in this room put their names forward, whether it be in the administration or the trustees, put their names out there to say, "I want to close schools." We put it out there to try to make a difference. So I've got a few reflections on the schools that we're talking about, because I have a bit of a personal touch with all these schools, but I think there's also things that we need to talk about, and there are no particular order. First one, Robert Bateman. Robert Bateman houses our Community Pathway students, and it has some, it has our IB students. We have some of the most vulnerable kids in our board in that school, and they've served those kids very, very well. It's named after perhaps one of the most famous artists in this province, in this country, perhaps in North America, who was a teacher in our system, and I'm sure he would be saddened to see that the name's in the mix. The next one is Nelson. I would also say that Robert Bateman, I have spent many of hours judging skills competitions at that school, where students from all around this board have gone there to participate in all sorts of skills competitions. They're fantastic, the staff has been great, and the kids in the school are great, and the community has rallied around that. The next school is Nelson. Nelson, as you know, has produced some really notable alumni, athletes. It's a very good example of the HDSB working together with the city of Burlington. Track events are there, and everybody in this room, I can't speak for the... Track events are there, and everybody in this room, I, I can't speak for the parents and the community members that are here, but everybody in this room has been there to enjoy track meets that our kids come from all over the school. They too are in the mix. Next is Aldershot. Aldershot is a school, it's a little oasis down there in the southwest of Burlington. It's a beautiful site, it serves all sorts of kids. My personal reflection is, when I first started teaching many, many moons ago, I coached hockey. To those around the outside, they may be surprised because it's not really, but I coached hockey. And we were beaten in the semifinals of the Halton semifinals by Aldershot, and the star player is now an esteemed principal in our secondary system. I wonder what he's thinking when he sees his name out there. There's also Lester B. Pearson. I started my administration career at Lester B. Pearson. I was a vice principal there. And fortunately, I had the opportunity to make contact with someone who knew Jeffrey Pearson. Jeffrey Pearson is the son of Lester B. Pearson. He was the former Canadian ambassador to Soviet Union. Lester B. Pearson, the only Canadian Nobel Prize winner. We invited him to the school. The gym was packed with students, parents, and community members to hear Jeffrey Pearson talk about the legacy of that school. It's got a great legacy, the name, but it's, it's struggling. It's struggling with enrollment. MM Robinson, we all know about the Drumline and MM Robinson, and many of the other attributes of MM Robinson. It started, I remember when it was the largest secondary school in Halton. I was a teacher in Oakville then, and the largest school was MM Robinson. It's a fantastic facility with great shops, great facilities. We run many of our OYAP programs there. So that's, next one is Frank Hayden. Frank Hayden, you might be surprised, is in the mix as well. Obviously, it would not be considered for a closure, but there are challenges with Frank Hayden. This year, we have 12 portables on site. Next year, we may have 18 portables on site. And there may be those out there that say, "Well, you screwed up on the boundaries. You did this, you did that." Maybe we did, but we are where we are. And the fact of the matter is, there may be 18 portables on site, and we have to address it. So whatever happened in the past, happened. We've got to deal with the future. The last school I want to talk about, which is the one raising most of the issues, is Burlington Central. Burlington Central, I, and I'm sure many of the secondary people here have spent many hours at the Sears Festival. It has a reputation for producing drama productions and a specialty in drama that I think goes well beyond Halton. In fact, I know of two, two, two students from White Oaks who performed at the Sears Festival several times, who now make their living as performers. You walk through the halls of Burlington Central, and there are pictures on the walls, or drawings on the walls, of individuals from this community, from the Burlington Central community, who served in World War II. Not all of them came back. When we look at that, we feel what you feel. We really do. And I think everybody around this table feels that. But there's challenging times, and it's incumbent upon us to face up to those challenges. Which brings me to the next part. And I, I'm going to be quite frank here. I'm quite disappointed and, and shocked that some of the rhetoric that's been out there in the community, and I'm very surprised that people in positions of leadership and civil responsibility have declared they're opposed to a closure of Burlington Central, have created Facebook sites in which there's people weighing in around the closure. We've heard comments, I've heard them today. I've just had an email sitting here about, "Don't close Burlington Central." We've heard comments that the system is rigged, the system is fixed, we're closing it. I'm not insulting the citizens of Burlington. I'm not insulting the intelligence of the people sitting in here, and I don't think we should be insulted either. This is a process that we're engaged in. This is a process to find out what the public thinks, how the public can help us, what can we do to solve the problems. Unquestionably, there are issues in these schools. So when we, when we talk about there'll be no more school closures, and we make a declaration about no more school closures, and we're not backing down, one of the parts of this process is to create a PAR committee, and to select people on this PAR committee to help us with these ideas. What is the environment we are creating for those people that we are asking to sit on that PAR community? We are creating a committee that is in an atmosphere of fear, divisiveness. We're asking them to work in an atmosphere in which people are, are shouting their positions. I don't believe that that's how we will get to the answer. I truly don't. And I think that the community, by and large, I have no, I'm, I'm totally confident, 100% confident, that the community understands the process that we're engaged in. So what is the process we're engaged in? We have schools that are small. My job as Director of Education is to look at these schools. And we just passed, this board just passed a multi-year plan. A strategic plan that will guide us through our next four years. And in that, we talk about every student. Under engagement and achievement, every student will be intellectually engaged in their learning and socially engaged in their school. Is that happening in our smaller secondary schools? There are many people that say it would, it is, but there's lots of people that say it isn't. We have lots of students that have to make choices. They have to go online, they have to transfer schools, they have to change their course pathways. They have to make different decisions. So are we living up to what our multi-year plan is? We have a STEM, we have, one of our values is equity. Is, are the students in some of our smaller high schools having the same equity of opportunity as those in our large high schools? Do they have the same breadth of courses to draw upon to take that? Do they have the same breadth of extracurriculars to draw upon? The student that wants to play football, can they play football in one of those smaller high schools? So they have a choice to make. They either leave, or they don't play. So the, we're also responsible, and I think the taxpayers would agree, that as Director and the Board of Trustees, it's about stewardship and resources. And we have to look at those. Are we providing the appropriate resources for all our kids? Like it or not, we're in the game for every student in the Halton District School Board. And so do kids in Burlington, are they disenfranchised? I don't know. Do they have the same opportunities? I know they don't have the same breadth of courses. I know they don't have the same breadth of extracurriculars. I don't know if that disadvantages them though. That's part of the PAR process, to find that out. So when we hear stuff like, "I will not support school closures under any means," what, I, I'm baffled by what does that mean? What if the enrollment of one of these schools that we're looking at dropped to 50 kids? What if it dropped to 100 students? 100 students would be 25 students per class. What if the building was in such disrepair that it would cost tens of millions to repair? When we could rebuild a brand-new school and put all these other kids in there? So that's the process that we're engaged in. So as Director, we look at those, and we say, "Have we met the criteria for to commit to a boundary review process?" And the answer is, yes, we have met the criteria. We as a board have met the criteria, and Dom will take that through you. So for us to make a choice, so we put a recommendation to the board, I would not be doing my job or a service to the students of Burlington. I know we hear a lot about community hubs in high schools, and I believe that. I strongly believe that. But students are primarily institutions for education of kids now and in the future. Yes, community hubs are important, but it's about what we do for kids so they can have a future. So when we put this out there, it's to engage in a process, and I would not be doing my job if I did not put it in front of the trustees to at least consider whether we do a PAR process or not. You know, I, I paraphrased Winston Churchill at the beginning. I'll paraphrase someone more modern, and that's President of the United States Barack Obama. He said, when he was talking about gun control, "Not to choose is also a decision." Not to choose is also a decision. So we put this in front of the trustees to consider. And I think it's incumbent upon everybody in this room, incumbent upon everybody around this table, to lower the temperature and allow the process to proceed in an environment that is creative. We have plenty of examples in this board. We just did a Program Viability Committee. The recommendation that was sent to the board and passed was not the original recommendation, and it came out of public consultations. The last PAR I was involved in in southeast Oakville, the recommendation that was passed at the board was not the original recommendation. Every boundary review I've been involved in, it was a different recommendation that went forward than the one that we initially put out there. So we need to lower the rhetoric. We need to talk consistently about this. We strongly, strongly believe in public consultations. I have no license, nor does anybody in this room, on all the answers. So we look to the public to help us. But if we create an environment that makes the public frightened to provide that input, then we are depriving our students of valuable information in order for us to make our recommendation. Thank you, I'll pass it to Dom.
Welcome Mr. Renzella, when you're ready.
I don't think I'll be as dynamic as the director in terms of my presentation, but I'll move forward with the, this PowerPoint presentation. The outline of the presentation is talking about the, our board policy, the long-term accommodation plan, which is our roadmap with respect to accommodation, conditions for undertaking a Program and Accommodation Review, which is referred to as a PAR, the objective of a Program and Accommodation Review, the Program and Accommodation Review Committee, what it, what it consists of and, and who's on it. We'll then proceed to the staff recommended option. Talk a little bit about capital investments and where we go from with that. And again, I, I just a brief discussion on the process timeline. Well, the policy overview is a result of the ministry, of a couple of policy guidelines that the Ministry of Education released in 2015. One is the Community Planning Partnerships Guideline and the Pupil and Accommodation Review Guidelines. And as a result of these guidelines, the boards are expected to have policies in place to, to, to meet those particular guidelines. And that, and those guidelines and policies are available on our board website. In October, the board passed the Community Planning and Partnership Policy. And in February of this year, the board approved the Program and Accommodation Review Policy. As trustees are well aware, and, and just to kind of reiterate with the public, we produce annually a planning tool that is referred to as the Long-Term Accommodation Plan. It provides enrollment projections, guides accommodation planning for over a 10-year period. Again, the LTAP also provides, identifies accommodation pressures resulting from the projected enrollments and proposes strategies to address them, including new schools, additions, you know, looking at open and operating schools that may have unused space, and discuss and review areas where there's schools that may be candidates for consolidation or closure. In 2012, 2013, in the Long-Term Accommodation Plan, a PAR was identified to be undertaken for Burlington Secondary Schools due to the low utilization. And since then, every LTAP has highlighted that need because of the ongoing decline in enrollment in, in those, in the secondary schools in Burlington. And in this year's LTAP, or last year's, excuse me, approved by the board in May of, of this year, highlighted again the concerns of low utilization and the consideration be given to undertake a PAR for all Burlington Secondary Schools once again. As the director had mentioned, there are certain conditions for undertaking a PAR. And at least one, based on our policy, at least one of the five conditions need to be met. The school or group of schools has experienced or will experience declining enrollment where the on-the-ground capacity or utilization rate is below 65%. Again, reiterating what the director had mentioned, reorganization involving the school or group of schools could enhance program delivery and learning opportunities for students. The third bullet, under normal staffing allocation practice, it would be necessary to assign three or more grades to one class in one or more of the schools. That more like, more or less relates to elementary schools and not particularly to secondary schools. The fourth bullet is the current physical condition of the schools. Negatively impacts the optimum operation of the buildings and program delivery. And the fifth one is in respect of one or more of the schools under consideration, there are safety, accessibility, and environmental concerns associated with the building, the school site, or its locality. We can confidently state that at least two of the five conditions have been met. The OTG capacity, our utilization rate is below 65% in a number of schools. And the reorganization involving the school or group of schools could enhance program delivery. The other fourth and fifth bullets, I, I think that's something that will be considered as part of any review by the Program and Accommodation Review Committee in terms of the physical condition of the schools and schools that have environmental or accessibility concerns. Again, just kind of briefly going over condition one, the OTG utilization. We have about 629 available pupil places, or an 80% utilization for those secondary schools north of the QEW overall, and about 1,264 available or empty pupil places south of the QEW 403. In terms of particular schools, you can see that we have a few schools. In particular, Lester B. Pearson, which is currently at 65% utilization and projected to go to 55% in 2020 and 50% by 2025. We have MM Robinson, which is currently at 54%, declining to 46% over the next 10 years. And Robert Bateman is at 60% with a decline to 50% by 2025. Again, underutilization has been a concern for Burlington Secondary Schools. Secondary schools in Burlington with the lowest utilization. And we've just kind of, again, just talked about it. Below 70% are Burlington Central, Lester B. Pearson, MM Robinson, and Robert Bateman. And we've just updated information relative to October 1st enrollments. So Burlington Central has just increased slightly. Lester B. Pearson has seen a, a decline from last year. Same with MM Robinson, and same with Robert Bateman. The other question or comment is with respect or condition is enhanced program delivery. In the report, there is PowerPoint presentations that talk about the whole issue of small secondary schools, large secondary schools, data trends, that was presented more recently to the Committee of the Hall, and talks about the benefits of each type of school. Again, the small schools tend to have closer knit communities. The larger schools tend to offer more choices to students. Again, three of the Burlington High Schools are considered small schools. They are Aldershot, Burlington Central, and Lester B. Pearson. We have two medium-sized schools in Robert Bateman and MM Robinson with enrollments above 700. And then we have two large schools, Dr. Frank Hayden and Nelson High School with enrollments over 1,000 students. The objective of our Program and Accommodation Review. And again, reemphasizing what the director had mentioned, "The board is committed to providing the best educational opportunities and learning environments for all students within the financial resources available." And this is within the board policy. The board is committed to the following principles. Program and accommodation decisions to take into account the needs of all students in all schools, in the affected community, and the board as a whole. Affected communities will have an understanding of the process and the level of consultation to take place. Processes for decision-making will be timely, inclusive, transparent, and open. And in the students', communities', or system's best interests, the Program and Accommodation Review may occur as a result of financial constraints, changes in curriculum, program demands, student enrollment, or other unforeseen factors. The Program and Accommodation Review Committee will, is an The Program and Accommodation Review Committee will, is an outcome if, if the trustees move forward with the decision to undertake a Program and Accommodation Review. And basically, the PAR is primarily challenged to share information between the board and communities, to meet, review information, provide feedback from the community, and to suggest alternate options. The PAR will consist of a trustee and a superintendent from an area outside of Burlington. And from each school, there'll be a principal or designate, two parents and/guardians. And once the PAR is constituted, an invitation will be extended to a municipal counselor or delegate. Again, want to point out that the final decision is to be made by the Board of Trustees.
Director Miller would like to add something?
Yeah, thanks. With that municipal delegate, that would be through Burlington City Council. The invitation, if it was to, if the PAR committee decided, the invitation would go to Burlington City Council, and they would determine.
Thank you. Staff recommended option. Again, the staff is required to present a recommended option according to board policy when more than one option is present. As you can see by the board report, we've had, we developed, or staff has developed 19 options, and, and again, has been presented to, and, and what the recommended option is option 19, again, is presented to initiate discussion between staff, the board, and the PAR. Moreover, this staff option is to be used to start the PAR process, initiate discussion and input from the community. This staff option, and again, want to reiterate, is not the final board decision.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to comment on that, and it's, it's worded very well in the report. It is not to be misconstrued as the trustees' recommendation. At this time, the recommendation that has been put out there, which is a requirement, is also the best thinking that staff has at this point. But as I said in my earlier preamble or preface, we, this is a dilemma, a challenge for us, and we need help in solving it. This is our best thinking. It doesn't mean it is the best thinking. And that's important distinction for people to understand. And so therefore, it's got to be in there. We put it out there, and it starts the process. If people become, if we become fixated on that recommendation, then we oppose that, and we never get to the great ideas that will help solve this challenge.
And, and the community has a lot to offer in the decision, the final decision. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just looking at the impacts of option 19, what does it mean? Well, the option 19 refers to would result in a Lester B. Pearson High School closing and a French immersion program from Dr. Frank J. Hayden being redirected to MM Robinson. And what this does, it increases enrollments and utilization at MM Robinson High School and provides accommodation relief to Dr. Frank Hayden Secondary School. The next one is Burlington Central High School closes, and, and again, it increases enrollments and utilization at Aldershot High School. As well, there's addition of a French immersion program to Robert Bateman High School, which and expands its catchment area. And what it does, it increases enrollments and utilization in Robert Bateman High School. And because we're expanding the boundary, including some of the students that currently attend Dr. Frank Hayden, provides some accommodation to Dr. Frank Hayden in terms of the French immersion program. And again, these are just some schematic maps of what the boundaries would look like under this option. Capital investments. Well, we have a facility ranges from 94 years for Burlington Central High School to three years for Dr. Frank Hayden. Capital projects will be, will be proposed to the Ministry of Education for funding, dependent on the outcomes of the Program and Accommodation Review. We really didn't want to start putting things out there, not, you know, trying to, we, we don't want to put it into the, give the community the wrong impression that this is what's going to happen. We want to go through the process, see what happens, and then if there is any capital projects that will be required, we'll, we'll move forward with that. Again, that will be done once a decision is made by the board in spring of 2017. Staff will review and present the options to the Board of Trustees with respect to capital investments, and then we will submit those proposals to the Ministry of Education. Process timeline, we want to start moving relatively quickly, and formation of the PAR committee is hopefully by the beginning of December. We are required to hold at least a minimum of two public meetings, and these are some tentative dates. It does not preclude the, the opportunity for the PAR to have more, or the board to have more public meetings if so warranted. There will be a minimum, again, of four PAR working meetings. There could be more than four, five, six, again, depends on the situation and information needs and options that are being requested. We hope to have directors' report to the Committee of the Whole sometime in March, end of March, a public delegation night in April to talk about the recommendations, and then presentation to the Board of Trustees for decision in, in the second meeting in May. And any decisions that result from the Board of Trustees will be implemented for 2018. In concluding, learning opportunities are limited in small secondary schools. There is a significant amount of available pupil places in Burlington Secondary Schools, and by reducing pupil places, the board can be in a position to renew and upgrade remaining secondary school facilities. Opportunities will be provided for the community to provide feedback and input throughout the process. Again, in conclusion, ultimately, the final decision or decisions resulting from the PAR process will be made by the Board of Trustees. Thank you.
And I would just add, for the community members here, this PowerPoint will be posted on the website tomorrow morning, if you want it, and then share it around.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions about the process for either the director or Mr. Renzella tonight? Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Madam Chair, to Director Miller, thank you for your introduction today. Certainly answered a lot of the questions that have been bubbling up in the community as well as addressing some of those rumors. So thank you for that. I have a lot of questions tonight. I do. And they're mostly going to be centered on the process. However, I do have specific questions about the recommendations. So to my fellow trustees, I'll keep going back on the speaker list and take my time, my turn. So one of the questions that I have, so notwithstanding the decision to commence a PAR, I'm getting questions from the public to understand, I want to say, the newer amendments of the PAR process with respect to how the PAR committee is composed and how it could potentially affect them. Certainly, there are, there are elements the public would like clarification on. The report speaks to the affected school communities that would be invited to sit at the PAR table. Despite this being a high school PAR, two of the schools listed, as you know, include elementary programs for grade seven and eight. In these two particular situations, the delivery of the elementary program is directly affected by the PAR. Will the grade seven and eight elementary school components be invited to sit at the table? My other question to the director about the PAR committee makeup is can the director speak to how each of the two school candidates would apply the selection criteria that they'll, they'll be using, the deadlines to apply, and any particular characteristics that would be helpful to guide their participation at the PAR table?
Thank you, Chair Amos, I mean, trustee Reynolds through Chair Amos to trustee Reynolds. I'll start, and Senior Manager Renzella will talk about the specifics around the selection process. I'll start with the characteristics. I think the people that sit on this committee will be creative, open-minded people, people that are reflective and thinking, and at the heart of the matter, understand what students need, what students need to be successful. I think it's important that those characteristics come to the forefront around, around this discussion. I would discourage people who have already hardened positions, one way or the other, coming forward, because this is about problem solving. This is about helping the board, the, the board staff, put a recommendation in front of the trustees that supports the kids of Burlington. And so we need people that are prepared to do that. As far as the, the question around the elementary components of those two schools being included, they would not be included as, I, I don't believe, I mean, we'll check, I don't believe they would be included because it's a secondary review, it's not an elementary review. And if one of the schools, the two schools that, that we're talking about are Aldershot and Burlington Central, both have an elementary program, grade seven and eight. And I'll remind trustees that those grade seven and eight programs were put into those schools because of low enrollment. They were there to try to raise the enrollment of those schools, or raise the numbers of kids in the schools. But they, if, if one of those schools, and it's a big, big if, I cannot emphasize this enough. First of all, it's, this is for the trustees' consideration around initiating a PAR process. And then second, if the PAR process goes, and third, if there is a recommendation to close one of those schools, we would then, next year, have to initiate an elementary PAR for Burlington as well, or a boundary review to fill up those schools with seven and eight kids. We'd have to make that decision at that time. So I'll let manager, Senior Manager Renzella answer the question about the, the logistics of it.
So as outlined in the board policy, the, there are two representatives from each of the affected school. Of course, there's the school principal and/or his or her designate, which will act as a resource only. And then there'll be two parents and guardians from each school, one of whom will be nominated by their school council chair, and the other will be selected by the superintendent of that school through the submission by parents as an expression of interest. And then the superintendent will review all parent representation and endeavor to ensure that all affected geographic areas and programs are represented. So try to get a balance in terms of the, the people from that, each particular school. So one through school council, and one through an application process as an expression of interest, through to the superintendent of the affected school. And that superintendent will then gauge the applicants and make sure that there is adequate distribution in terms of geography and, and program.
Thank you. Just to follow up, please?
Go ahead.
So that the, the candidates must be parents in the school or guardians, and, and the superintendent will make that, that choice of that second person. Do we have any timelines or any ideas to when that would, would happen?
We will, again, it's, it's all contingent upon the board giving us, approving the direction to undertake a PAR. We will commence that process, you know, December 20th in terms of getting that, October, did I say December? Sorry. October 20th, because again, we are looking at trying to have the first meeting by early December. So there's going to be a relatively quick turnaround, but we'll have to make sure that all the, the, the information is ready to go if, again, the board decides to move forward with the Program and Accommodation Review.
And then October 20th is because if this is approved on October the 19th, that would be as early as you could do it. Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. My question is with respect to grandparenting. Some of the elements of, of the proposed options included removing programs from certain schools, and it has been in the past our tradition to try and grandparent students in their home school, and then only the newer students would be going to the alternative, the new home for the, for that group of students. I'm wondering if grandparenting will be an option, at the very least, for students going into grade 12 if a program change happens at a school?
Through Chair Amos to trustee Collard. This board has been magnificent in supporting kids through grandfathering in almost everything. It would be our hope that we would be able to do that. Given the complexity of this, it, it would be difficult to say for sure, but it would be our hope that students would be able to graduate from the school that they spent three years at, so.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. My comments, I have a number of commented questions. I think I'll, my first round here will be related to the recommendation and some potential friendly amendments. Firstly, the recommendation says in a couple of places, within five days of approval. And given the nature of the process, I was thinking that it may be helpful to specify that that approval is related to the initiation of, of a PAR. So it's a process-related approval as opposed to one that is reflective of a particular I think it would also be helpful, perhaps, to consider mentioning in the recommendation the consultation and communications plan, that that would also be implemented within five days of approval, so that we're not giving an impression that we're solely quote-unquote informing, because the word informing is, is in that recommendation. And I do think that there is an authentic pathway to consultation and communications, and perhaps we can reflect that more fully by including something of that nature in our, our recommendation. And lastly, the recommendation to strike the committee, I note that we have some disjointedness between our policy and the ministry one. The ministry policy gives an opening for student voice, and our policy doesn't do that. So it's my hope that, you know, I would, I would look for advice from my student trustee colleagues in this regard, but that we would find some mechanism to also include student voice, because Director Miller, you said earlier that the parents and communities know those schools well, and I would also submit that the kids that are in those schools know them very well as well. So that's, that's all. Thanks.
Director Miller.
Through Chair Amos to trustee L. Harrison. On your first point, yeah, no problem, we'll make that adjustment. We have deliberately not included the communication plan because this is about process, this is about initiating a PAR process. I can assure the Board of Trustees and the community, if approved, there will be a comprehensive communication plan issued the night of approval. Including in that will be the plans around student voice and involving students in getting their input. I, I, I'm reluctant to give too many details about how we plan to communicate at this point, because we are trying our best to adhere exactly to the process that the ministry has laid out. But we will have a comprehensive plan involving communities, school visits, student voice, and in fact, I will be going to Burlington City Council as well at some point as a delegation. So hence, it's not in this report. It's, we've taken the model of our program viability committee, in which we made a recommendation around a program viability committee, and the communication plan came as a separate report, so.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you, and I've got a few things as well, so stop me when you need to stop me. On the first page of the report, you are tendering for a third-party consultant, and I don't believe we've used a third-party consultant in our PARs before, and I was just wondering, is that different, and how is it different, and how quickly will you be able to pull together the hiring and the criteria for that third-party consultant? That's my first question.
Through Chair Amos to trustee Daniele. I'll look to Superintendent Veerman to help round the timelines. No, we have not used a third party. More and more boards are using a third party. There's two reason we're doing, two reasons we're doing a third party. One of those reasons has been illustrated with some of the rhetoric and, and stuff that's going around on Facebook and everything else. There's a mistrust and everything else, and we're trying to demonstrate an objectivity, that this is objective, we'll bring in a third party who is not attached to the whole district. district school board to facilitate these meetings. The second reason is, as a board, we have many, 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 many duties to perform. We cannot have senior staff consumed with a PAR 24/7, because it will neglect other responsibilities, including in the schools in Burlington. So I'll look to Superintendent Veerman to answer the second part around the...
Superintendent Veerman? Thank you. Through the Chair, the recommendation does speak to the consultant. According to the broader public procurement directive, boards, all public organizations are required to tender the work of consultants. So if the recommendation is approved on October 20th, we will be in a position to issue a public tender. It is on bidding go, which is where all of our tenders are posted. And the normal timeline is approximately 10 days for individuals to respond. At that time, based on criteria, predetermined criteria, a selection will be made, and that individual then will be in a position to begin.
Could you go back on the list if it's a separate topic? Thank you. Trustee Gervance.
Thank you, Chair Amos. My question is just about the selection of the non-school council member of the PAR for each school, and I was just wondering how that net will be cast? Will it be advertised? Will it be, how would open-minded parents and guardians from the schools who are not part of, potentially part of their school councils be able to apply?
I was hoping to charge a fee, an application fee, and, you know, no. I think that's, again, this is our first kick at the cat in terms of a program and accommodation review. It would not be, I think we would have to send something out to the school community through center voice, soliciting interest, expressions of interest, to be a part of that committee, and provide them a timeline because of what we're, the timelines that we're facing as we move forward. So it'll be done relatively quickly, as soon as the decision is made by the board to proceed with a PAR.
Director Miller?
Through your Chair Amos to trustee Gervance. Don't forget that this will be the official PAR committee, but we will be, we will be receiving input from the community, from members who are not on the committee. There'll be, there's a Q and A, we'll be soliciting opinions from students and many others as well. So it's not the only vehicle to participate with good ideas.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to, this is topic to the first question I asked, which is the process that would be undertaken. So what I understand is that the director is saying that even though the elementary programs are housed in the same schools or facilities as the high schools, I'm talking about Burlington Central and Aldershot, they're not invited to be a part of this conversation. And they'll actually have to wait until the school closure, if the school closure decision or the PAR commences and the school closure decision. When would these people have to wait to find out where their kids are going to school? Because their program is, they can't complete their program in that facility.
Through your Chair Amos to trustee Reynolds. If school closures isn't approved, they won't have to wait at all. But they will, they will know when the report comes to the board, and the board either approves or not. And that's in June of next year or late May of next year. So they would, they would know.
Comment list. Thank you. Trustee Pappen.
Thank you. Director Miller, through the Chair. My question also has to do with the grade seven and eights. I know we do have a history of having seven and eights in a high school that was closed. And could you, Huey Park in South Oakville closed, and they moved it to Abbey Park, but they had to do a PAR for, I would imagine, the secondary and the grade seven and eights at the same time, so if you could speak to that.
Through your Chair Amos to trustee Michelle, I'm going to have to get back to you on that. I know that the French immersion kids went to Blakelock, a number of kids went to Abbey Park, and as to the sevens and eights, I'm not sure where they all ended up. There would have been, they went to all Eastview? They went to Eastview?
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Yes, regarding the ministry's policy, which is called the pupil accommodation review, and our policy called the program and accommodation review, even though they have the same letters from the same acronym, I wanted you to comment on the fact that they are actually the same thing, just with a different name, so there's no confusion for the public when they see the two different names.
Chair Amos to trustee Collard, they are indeed the same thing. The ministry calls it a pupil accommodation. We, in this board, and the ministry used to call it that too, always called the program an accommodation. So I think we, we should probably look at our policy to revise the name at some point, but, but the ministry guidelines and the ministry policy around pupil accommodation is exactly the same as our program and accommodation, and senior manager Renzella has them.
I think this has been an issue historically, because prior to the pupil accommodation review guidelines, the ministry, they had, used to refer to them as the accommodation review guidelines. And I know historically, when I was involved in preparing the previous policies, there was a lot of comment around the table from trustees to say, it's not about accommodation necessarily, it's about program. So that's why we've been, you know, continue with that nomenclature moving forward. So it's program and accommodation. And you read the ministry guidelines, it's, well, it's just about accommodation, it's about filling up pupil places and whatnot, but we, you know, and as the Director Miller mentioned, it's the program issue, it's the impact on students. So that's why we've continued to include that.
I agree. Thank you very much. The program is the most important piece there, yes.
And I agree as well. Trustee Daniele.
I think we would all agree, it's about much more than just bubs and seats, it's about how we're teaching our kids. And I do note that on page 36, you comment that the option is a, presented as not a final option, but a starting point. So by that, the message that I'm taking from that, and I'm looking to you for confirmation, is that we could end up with a completely different option than this one, after all the consultation is done, that this is simply a starting point, rather than starting from a blank slate, this is a starting point, and we could end up with something completely different. That's my first question. My second one is, I noticed that we established the PAR on December 1st, and there's a public meeting on December 8th, and then the working committee doesn't come back to January 26th. I'm curious what you're expecting from that public meeting, given that the PAR won't really have started at that point? Would that just be an overview, just so that the community knows what's coming for that? Because to start the, establish the PAR on the 1st, have a public meeting on the 8th, and then not go back to the working until January 26th, I'm, just the optics of that, if you can explain the thinking behind that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Through your Chair Amos to trustee Daniele. You're exactly right on your first point. It is a starting point, and the ultimate recommendation that may be before the trustees in May or June may be completely different. It, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, the whole point, the absolute whole point of going to the public is to get public input. And if the public, if we listen to the public input, and we have a history of it in this board, and I can attest to it personally, and I think other people can, around boundary reviews and other parks in this board, we have heard. So, yeah, there's a very good chance that this, this will not be the final recommendation. There's a chance it will be as well, though. So let's be honest, but we're following the process. As for your second question, the December 1st, or the December, what's the date, 8th? That would be where the facilitator would be introduced, and it basically go through the PAR process for the committee's purposes and the public to understand all, what exactly is happening. Having said that, there will be meetings and communication and information through technology, through personal meetings, prior to there, by board staff, namely me, so.
I just want to reiterate, the purpose of the first public meeting is, as outlined in the policy, an overview of the, of the, of the park orientation session, discussion of the director's preliminary report, and the recommended option, staff recommended option. And as part of that process, there'll be a presentation of school information profiles, which we will, staff will be preparing, which I, there's a, there's a number of, a certain amount of information that will be included, that is identified in the program and accommodation review policies, that is just like a binder of information of everything about each individual school. So that will also be presented at that first meeting. So it's kind of, as the director mentioned, our orientation session and so forth. Again, ultimately, going back to your first comment, I just want to reiterate, decisions made by trustees, there have been instances that notwithstanding recommendations and community input from, from the park and the community and staff, there have been instances where trustees have basically, have just didn't consider them and made up their own mind. So again, hopefully, we won't go in that direction, but again, it's, it's the ultimate decision rests with trustees.
Director Miller?
I would just add, I would just add that at that meeting, there'll be more information presented at that meeting than there is now. This is about initiating a process. There'll be more information required for the process, so.
Trustee Harvey Hope.
I have a couple of comments and one question. Just wanted to reiterate that this is a starting option, because the ministry has said we must start with one. We have a new program and accommodation policy, and it's following the new ministry guidelines. And it's also trying to take out any of the bumps that we've had from previous program and accommodation reviews. And there were a few very bumpy ones, and we've learned from those things, and we've put things in place in our new policy that is attempting to make it smoother this time around. We have very well-functioning boundary review committees, we've used what we've learned from there. But also that those park meetings and the working meetings and the public meetings are all open, may not be participating, but are open. I just wanted to clarify and make sure I understood that correctly. I have attended boundary review committees when I was not part of the committee. Other members of the public have attended, you can listen. There is an opportunity to invite, for instance, the grade seven, eight contingent to make a presentation. They would be involved, there would be a undertaking to make sure that all other parties were included. And we've made sure that all of the Burlington schools are on this list, so we don't accidentally not have one of the schools that might be affected. So those are my comments. My question is, part of this recommendation is asking trustees to spend money for a third-party consultant, but there is no parameter on this, and I wondered if that was going to be part of the recommendation, or we have any idea what the budget might be for that, and whether it's coming as a separate piece or...
Director Miller?
Thank you, Chair Amos to trustee Harvey Hope. First of all, thank you for your comments, you're spot on around the policy and the ministry and so on. As for the question, I'll look to Superintendent Veerman.
Through the Chair, that will be part of the tender process. The criteria and the requirements that we identify as part of the tender will allow interested parties to provide their recommendations in terms of price, and that would come forward as part of subsequent recommendation to the board with a funding source.
Go ahead.
So is that approval of the tender coming to the board? Or once we approve this motion, if it's approved, it's an implicit, like, I'm not exactly sure how we know what the ballpark dollars are, or how we know what we agreed to, or whether it's coming back as a separate tender?
The way I read it is to tender for one, it does, it's not to, I believe the tender would have to come back here for approval. Am I right, Superintendent Veerman?
If that's the wish of the committee, that's correct.
Request proposals to tender, meaning to tender that way, to get, I'm going to do this much for this many hours for this much money, and then we, then somebody would pick, and it's not clear who's picking.
Through the Chair, the tender process would follow the normal tender process that would involve any other tenders that are issued by the board. There would be a selection committee, which I would defer to the director in terms of that committee, that would evaluate the tender based on the criteria that are set prior to the tender being issued, so that all interested parties have an opportunity to, to include all the requirements in their tender. And as with any review of tender, there are criteria that are evaluated, and then based on the review and the summary of all of the individuals involved in the selection, then the interested, or the approval of the successful candidate would be, would be presented to the board.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I first wanted to just go back to my earlier comments and just clarify that what I was suggesting with respect to the motion and consultation plan was just to say that we will be, we will be implementing one, as opposed to requesting that the details of the plan be in the motion. So I just wanted to make sure, because I wasn't sure that that was clear.
Through your Chair Amos to trustee L. Harrison, the answer is yes.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. So then I do have to, because I think it balances out the inform piece that's in there, that's my reason there, two questions. One is, can we hear a little bit more about the, whether the process of the, with the potential partners will be ongoing while this process is going on? And secondly, in a couple of spots in the report you mentioned, such as page 32 under Bateman, there's a, under 100 students per grade is mentioned, so I just wonder what the significance of that particular threshold is, because it's mentioned a few times.
Through your Chair Amos to trustee L. Harrison, I'll start, and then I'll let Superintendent Hunt Dibbin's weigh in around the numbers of students per grade. But now I forgot what the first part was, around, oh, the partners, community partners. That process will continue. That process will continue to move along as it is. The reality is, we're not having a queue of partners lining up outside our schools saying they want to partner with us for these schools. We have no intention or reason to deter partners from coming forward, and no intention or reason to not engage with them if they come forward. There's, there's a few little feelers out there, but nothing very concrete at this point. Now, with the 100, 100 students per grade, that's approximately 25 students per class, give or take, you know, it could be 30 and 20, et cetera. That means there's only four classes per grade. So that means four classes of English, four classes of math, four classes of science in the grade nine and 10, which increases the probability that those students will be conflicted out primarily in their optional areas, especially when they get to grade 11 and 12. For the community members, is, grade nine and 10 curriculum is pretty fixed for students, it's a pretty prescribed, they've got one or two options at the most. But grade 11 or 12, it's much less prescribed, and you end up what we call single-section classes. And because there's so few classes, the kids get conflicted out, and they don't get their choices of courses they want. And we also have, because of low numbers, classes being canceled, that because, you know, you might get nine, 10 kids in a class. Now, the principal, usually in consultation with the department heads, has to make a decision, do we run this class at nine or 10? decision, do we run this class at nine or 10 students who clearly want the class, whatever it is, photography for, just as an example. But if you do run it, that might mean there's another class at 36, 37 kids. So it, it magnifies the issues of class selection, subject selection for students. Superintendent Hunt Dibbin, do you want to add something?
I would just add to that, that of course, the fact that the core courses are offered at more than one level also complicates it, because the students don't come in neat little bundles to timetable them. So offering the grade nine and 10 core, where you have applied and academic as the choice, as well as your open-level courses, also complicates that in terms of trying to come up with the right number in each class and doing it in a cost-effective way, and a way that allows kids, as they progress through, to take the options that they truly want to take.
And I, I just have one final comment on that. Beyond the classes, we, we all know, and, and these people wouldn't be here if this wasn't the case, schools are more than classes. They're more than the bricks and mortar of a building. There are also all the other activities that occur in a school. And when you have those small numbers, you have, A, not enough, frequently not enough teacher supervisors to run all the activities, and/or you don't have enough students to have particular activities. And I'll use a football team, even though I hate to just think about athletics, because we have giant musicals in schools and so on. But a football team, at best, you would have a varsity team, you wouldn't have a junior or senior team, because they have about 40 kids per team. So you'd be looking at 80 kids out of the 400 you'd have, you know, in football, given that not very many females, very few females participate in football, it's 80 of 200, you're almost at 50% of the kids. So, and the same is true for musicals and everything else. So it's, it's, the classes are significant for the kids' pathways and where they're going, and their choices when they're going, whether they're going to the workplace or university. It's significant, but it's more than that. There's lots of things for kids to do in schools, and if we don't have the staff to provide those opportunities for, for those students, they don't get those, those chances, choices.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves?
Thank you, and I apologize for the procedural nature of, of my request, actually. Just in listening to some of my colleagues talk about the, the motion itself, and I'm thinking two, two weeks from now where there might be some, some suggested changes to, to the motion. It's a very lengthy motion, so I was just wondering if I could ask my colleagues that they pose any amendments in, in true Roberts rules form, including striking, which words to strike, what words to substitute, which, which words to insert, and that will help us all move along next, the next time we see this. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds?
Thank you, through the chair. As you know, Director Miller, I, I'm interested in, I know all the trustees here are interested in finding solutions to help prevent closing a school. I've been asked by the community as to why the board has not discussed developing a community school of the arts in our, in, in our board. Certainly, there's a concern that an opportunity is there, providing a new program, offering to attract perhaps new market share of students who are currently being serviced outside of our communities and outside of our board. Is this discussion of new innovative programs likely something that could be done at that PAR table?
Director Miller?
Through your Chair Amos, to trustee Reynolds, there have been conversations around that, but your last statement is the most, is the most instructive. Yes, that can happen at the PAR table. It, it, you know, people may say, let's create in a, a school of the arts, like in Toronto or other areas, Niagara, or let's create a school for athletes. And some jurisdictions, some boards have done that to try to account for low growth. We're fortunate in Halton in that we are not a low-growth board, but we're unfortunate in South Burlington because we are in a low-growth area. And that's, so we are experiencing the same things as those low-growth areas that are around all boards. The experience is, though, it's still a limited, it's still a limited pool of students you're drawing from. In, in those, I know, and I'm not going to mention the schools, but in other boards that have created that, the students that go to those schools are primarily from that board and, and from that area, because it's, it's still a travel distance and it's all those other things. But can it be considered in a PAR? Can that be in front of the trustees? I would say absolutely. I think all bets are off, whatever can be put out there that can maybe help these things.
Thank you. And, oh, trustee Reynolds?
Thank you. I, I've got a list. Okay. Through the, through Madam Chair, to the director. You spoke to it this, this evening, that we all can't ignore the realities of the lack of finances that our board or struggles with. And I can't imagine the pressure of balancing declining enrollment in one of part of Halton with increasing populations in another. Can the director speak to the correlation that exists between the need to close a school with declining enrollments to opening schools?
I'll start, and I'll look to Superintendent Beerman and Senior Manager Renzella around It's not a one-for-one deal. It's not, you close a school, you get a school, you get the money for a new school. But you do, there are proceeds of disposition that comes out of that, that allows us to spend on upgrades, renovations of older buildings, older facilities. When we get a new school, we have to apply to the ministry for funding for a new school. One of the first questions they will ask us, though, or look at, is our LTAP, and do we have vacant or vacant pupil places? And if we have significant vacant pupil places, the ministry, I, I can never say never, but would be unlikely to give us the funds to build a new school, because their argument would be, we're building a new school, and right now, currently in Burlington, we have approximately 1,800 pupil places that are vacant. It would be very difficult to get funding for a new secondary school in Burlington, and may impair the ability to get it elsewhere in Halton as well. Unlikely, to be honest, but it could, because we've got all these empty spaces. So I'll look to Senior Manager Renzella to add to that.
Maybe a bit of a history lesson in terms of how schools were funded in the past. Long time ago, far, far away, the province had instituted a funding model where basically they looked at all your capacities in the board for elementary and secondary. And if your overall enrollment was below your capacity, they wouldn't give you money for a new school. With the thought that if you had empty spaces, and you had overcrowding in one location, they would suggest, well, bust those kids. So just imagine Milton, with all the number of portables and over-accommodation pressures in that area, students being transported to South Burlington. Now, finally, and I, and I think through the advocacy of a former superintendent at this board, they realized that there was an inequity there, and, and, and the fact that, that we have this discrepancy of new high-growth areas like Milton and North Oakville. And they started to look at more concentrated review areas and say, okay, let's look at a particular community neighborhood, i.e. North Oak, North Burlington, and, which resulted in the, the construction of Dr. Frank Hayden. If it had gone, in years gone by, they, we may never have gotten Dr. Frank Hayden, and if we considered all of Burlington, similarly with elementary schools. So they, they, they've kind of expanded and looked at it. We're going to continue to have the discrepancy, and we're not the only board suffering from them. You can go to our, our current, our co-terminus board, they have the same issues as we are. They have under-enrollment in areas south of the QEW in Oakville and Burlington, and they've gone through a process of closing elementary schools. And I know there's some issues with secondary as well. And if you move further to the east in Peel, in Dufferin Peel, they're going through the same thing. They have high-pressure growth in North Brampton, and in older established areas like South Mississauga, they're closing schools. And it's just a reflection of demographics and, and shifting growth in those communities, and the same thing is happening here.
Thank you. Trustee Al Harrison?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So just in, I, I wasn't going to speak again, but in respect of Vice Chair Graves' comments with respect to specific words and so on, is this an appropriate time to do that with respect to the motions? Now or when the motion's on the table?
It could be done now, so it comes back as a revised motion.
Okay. So my suggestion then, there's two. One, wherever it says, within five business days of the approval, because my, my point is with respect to the words, the approval, and being specific around that, that the words be added of a program and accommodation review for all secondary schools in the city of Burlington, because I think that makes it clear that the approval is about the process as opposed to any other things that it could possibly be about. And then the second one is just that we include a, that statement, that a consultation and communication plan be implemented within five days of...
You're adding a recommendation?
Yes.
I believe the director is going to be bringing a communication plan as information next week, so that if, if this passes, it would already be available on the information part of the agenda?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I, I would be reluctant to add that, because we, as I said, are adhering to the guidelines as the ministry has laid out. We have every intention of bringing, well, not every intention, we will be bringing out a communication plan, and it would come as a separate report. As trustee Harvey Hope has pointed out, we have had some bumps along the way in previous parks around process, and I want to ensure that we are not vulnerable if we commit to a process, and all the angst and anxiety that causes in a community to found out that we messed up in our process, or our, or didn't follow our own policy. So I, I understand the spirit and the will of the trustee, and I think all trustees would probably want the same, and as with the staff and the community. So it's, it's, it's around, this is about asking for approval of a process, and so that's, that's the reason.
Thank you. Trustee Collard?
Thank you. My, my question is regarding transportation. As you know, in the past few months, we've experienced difficulty with our transportation providers in securing full-time drivers for the school buses. And many of the options that were put forward in the report increased the number of students that would be using transportation services, and I'm wondering if there is a plan to deal with the shortfall of drivers that would ensure that these students, who would be additional transportation students, would not be suffering for lack of a driver?
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Collard. There's actually two questions there. Is there a plan to improve the number of, or to increase the number of drivers? Yes, there is, but it's independent of this report. We are hesitant to say that we are planning to increase drivers, because that would put currency, greater currency in the recommendation that's put forward, because the recommendation may change. So we have developed no plans around reflecting increased bus needs, increased driver needs as related to the recommendation here for that very reason. As we've said, the recommendation is a starting point, and I think if we put those plans in place, those, those out there that think we are at it, so to speak, or that it's rigged and this is the recommendation going forward, would have some fuel. And so, no, we're not doing that at that point. But there is a plan completely independent of that, because we're having a bus driver shortage now. And so during the director's report, Associate Director Bogue will talk about the plan about bus drivers. I know that's aside from this report, but, so.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds?
Thank you. So I understand that the main resource for this report coming to board is, lies on what is published in the long-term accommodation plan last spring. I'm interested to know, and can you share with us, how those numbers align with the current figures of students who are in schools today? I've been told some schools' numbers are higher because of international and new Canadians who've arrived since the, the LTAP was put together. And I'd like to know what kind of impact that, that effect has.
Again, I'll start. Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Reynolds. We have a count date October 31st, so our, our numbers won't be completely fixed, not fixed, is, solidified until October 31st. So it's difficult to comment exactly on that. I, I would look to Senior Manager Renzella or Executive Officer McFadden, but at this point, it has no bearing on this. However, October 31st may show us something else, and that would be information for the park committee.
Go ahead.
Just to follow up, through the chair, the enrollment projections in the LTAP is, is the basis for the projections. We will likely revisit those projections once those October 31st numbers are presented. We do have to do our enrollment projections for the LTAP, as well as for ministry requirements moving forward, so we'll have to update that to reflect any changes. Overall, we're relatively close in terms of our enrollments in Burlington. There may be some schools, you know, 10, 20 students, but, you know, not significant number, but we'll have to readjust those numbers moving forward.
Thank you. Trustee Gervens?
Through you, Chair Amos, to Director Miller. Just a sort of a process question with regards to the communication plan. So will the plan have to be voted on by the trustees, or, which would take several weeks to implement, or is it going to come as sort of an information item that will just be implemented?
Through your Chair Amos, to trustee Gervens, we would bring it as an information item, but we would be open to suggestions when it's, when it's brought.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope?
Yes, just a comment in, again, I've got some experience with some of these processes, having been a non-trustee member. The Program and Accommodation Review Committee, to the best of my knowledge, has the ability to request information on who gets bused to which schools, on information for specialized programs, on the current enrollments, on, you know, an aerial map. There are things one could request if they need, they feel they need the information to take into account for their purposes. And I believe it is our intention and our process in the past that requests from the committee of staff to present information is then publicly available on the Q and A and the FAQs in most cases, saying if somebody asks for a map, then we make sure everybody has access to the same map, because if they come up with a, if they come up with a solution based on that piece of information, then everybody should have access to the same information. So if somebody asks for something and it is publicly available and publicly accessible, if somebody goes to trouble figuring it out, then we can post the answer for all, so that everybody is on the same page. Am I correct?
Through your Chair Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope, I believe you are correct. These are public meetings anyway, but I believe you are correct. But we, we will have a... But we will have, I'm looking around to how we're setting it up on the website. It'll be a link to a separate thing, will it not? Dom?
Yes, there'll be a separate program through the Chair, to you, Director Miller. There'll be a separate section on the Board website referring to the Burlington Program and Accommodation Review. We'll have details, minutes of meetings. Also, as trustee Harvey Hope indicated, we'll have the school information profiles, which is really detailed information about all the schools, including their photos, maps, boundary maps, enrollments, programs, before and after school, you know, whatever's there. Again, it's establishing the program and accommodation review policies of what we need to have in there. And we can expand that list and expand those profiles for each individual school.
Thank you. And I believe any scenarios that are created are also posted there. Trustee Collard.
Yes, I just wanted to recognize the effort that has gone in to ensure that students receiving special education services have been included in this report, especially those that are in placements. And I just wanted to thank the Director and Senior Administration for recognizing the needs of special education students.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. So should the Park be engaged? Will the work of the Park reflect our values on empathy and equity? And when, specifically, I'm interested in the school information profile that was presented here by Mr. Ranzella earlier. In that profile, will we be able to see, or will the Park be able to see, an overlay of data that reflects what we know about the socioeconomic demographic school makeup? And would it include data from stakeholders like Community Development Halton?
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Reynolds. This process has to adhere to our multi-year plan and the values and the missions that we hold dearly. So empathy, equity, those are our values. And this process has to be, and I spoke about it earlier in my preamble around a part of, in fact, the impetus to put this in front of trustees for their consideration is related to the multi-year plan. It's about equity of opportunity for kids. We want to ensure that all kids in Halton, if you go to a big school in Oakville, or you go to a school in Burlington, or you're in Halton Hills or Milton, that kids have the same opportunities. So yes, it will be adhered to. As to the school profile, we can certainly provide that data, but I don't know if it's in the school profile. Is it, Dom?
Again, the profile identifies a lot of current tangible data. If there is a need for additional information, we can surely provide it for each school.
Absolutely, we can provide that. We've got that data. So, yeah, exactly, through our Kids Network, we've got demographic data and all those other things. So, you know, if it helps the work of the Park Committee and they request it, we would provide it. We would get it for them, absolutely.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. Through you to Director, and I guess this is more of a comment. In our LTAP, we have a wealth of data that helps to, helps us monitor each and every school in the region. And some of this data is provided in tonight's report. I think one's eye tends to go towards the on-the-ground, sorry, on-the-ground capacity, on-the-ground, and proportion utilization, as that's kind of a tangible thing we can understand. But we also had seen a presentation, and that's included in this report, around the size of the school in terms of the pupil numbers and what makes a small, medium, large school? And what are the benefits of a small and large school with respect to school population in terms of delivery of programs and scheduling and the wealth of other types of extracurricular activities? So in going forward, if this process is to take place, I think it's important to identify criteria that will help to guide why we consider a particular school. We've got 19 options presented here, and they very nicely outline what would happen should a school close with respect to the different programs, boundary changes, that sort of thing. But we need to understand why that particular school would be considered and what factors come into it. And compare that and contrast that to the characteristics of the other school. I think that will help to solidify some of the decision-making and allow for kind of a standard process of evaluation and assessment.
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Oliver. I want to, I have a question of clarification for you. Certainly, we would have to provide, certainly the Park Committee and ultimately the recommendation presented to the Board, if the Park process is approved, would have to include, the final recommendation would have to conclude the rationale, the characteristics, et cetera. I'd be reluctant, and I guess this is a question of clarification, to compare a school that we have recommended for closure compared to one that is open, that we're not. I think what we would do is, I mean, you don't want to be divisive in the community. You don't want to say, well, this one's closing and that one's open, na 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 booba, right? You want to, or whatever that expression is. So I think, so that's my question. Are you comparing it to a generic school?
No, this would be in looking through the options. Why, in option 19, we're looking at, for instance, it would be Burlington Central and Lester B. Pearson as compared to another set of schools in another option. So what, what about those schools lends the process that way?
Yeah, those rationale and characteristics would be put forward. Associate Director Bogue, do you want to make a comment about small school, large school? Because there is an appendix here, and Associate Director Bogue presented to Committee of the Whole and once before to the Board around some of the challenges, I guess.
Sure, thanks, Director Miller. And when I was listening to the question from trustee Oliver, I was thinking about the advantages and disadvantages of school size, which is really part and parcel of the whole equity of opportunity and programming, that sort of thing. You know, I think when we looked at, when we look at schools that are smaller schools or schools less than, you know, 500 and 600 students, we can talk about sort of some of the pros and cons there around program and opportunity. I think in terms of the actual decision-making around a school name that may come forward, I think it becomes, it becomes much broader than that. We could take two schools of 500, for example, and know that each of those schools, as they exist today, may have a limited program offering, for example. But when they come together to create a school of 1,000, we've got those opportunities. Which one might be the one put forward, might have a number of other factors beyond program, of course, which would be part of the committee to talk about, what are those other pieces as well?
And just for the community and trustees, I don't want them to get the impression that we are slagging small schools. There's lots of advantage, lots of advantages of small schools. You know, I've used an example of sports. There's lots more opportunities for kids to be on a school team. When there's less kids trying out, et cetera. So there are advantages, and many would argue that the, the, lack of a better way to describe it, the coziness of a small school makes the staff, allows the staff and the kids to work more closely together and to know the kids better and all the staff. So we acknowledge that. So this isn't just about saying, small schools. This is us putting this out there to say, we believe there's a challenge and that we've got to address this challenge, however we address it. And that's what the Park Committee will be looking at. So don't get the wrong impression that we think all small schools are bad. Not at all, not at all. There's lots of advantages with them.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
So parents, teachers, and principals use EQAO results and data to help understand their student needs and to inform decisions affecting students. I'd like to understand, have the EQA results informed the rationale to this recommendation?
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Reynolds. They haven't, put simply. Some of these schools have performed very well in EQAO and have done for some years. Statistically, they could also perform very badly with a very few numbers of students not doing well because there's just not that many kids. So it would be, I think, unfair to use it as a tool to say, this school or that school should remain open because the results are great if the following year, the results aren't so great because a smaller, they need fewer kids to do not so well for the results to go down as well. So we haven't included those. I think the EQAO results of these schools are a testament to the work of the staff and the communities that these kids are coming from. So I think there's no doubt that these kids are coming from, for the most part, are coming from very enriched environments at home. And they're, have very good staffs in their schools. But I would argue that's in all of our schools.
Trustee Collard.
I think it was 12 years ago, maybe 13 years ago, General Brock was closed and merged with Lord Elgin. And when that happened, they changed the name of the school to Robert Bateman. Is that something that we would consider doing if a merge of two schools happened? Would we consider changing the name of a school? Or would that be considered? Because the reason why they did that was so that everyone would feel that it was their school and that they weren't in somebody else's school. And so I'm wondering if that would have been a consideration or if that's something that you hadn't even thought about yet? Because it just occurred to me sitting here now.
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Collard. We haven't given that much consideration again because we're trying to adhere to the process and we don't want to give anybody the impression that this is what we're thinking ahead, merge two schools, becomes a new name. But certainly, it could be part of the recommendation. And if it was the will of the trustees and the will of the community, you know, if something went forward like that, we would have no reason to object to it. But I think it would have to emerge from the Park Committee. And again, predicated on doing a Park process. We haven't approved the process yet.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope. You seem to be commenting more than I'm asking questions, but.
One of the, through you, Madam Chair, in response to something that trustee Oliver said, one of the reasons why we also have made slight improvements in the new program and accommodation policy is the school information profiles are a way of describing all of the interesting attributes of each particular school, what makes them special, what kinds of programs they have, what kind of extracurriculars, who they serve, where are they, the geographic area around them. We have purposely gone away from a checkbox checklist. Does it have six bathrooms versus five bathrooms? Does it have two gyms versus one gym? I lived through that. It was horrible to, you know, add up and come up with a number and supposedly one number was better than another. That's not the point. The point is to take all of the input we have, that the Park Committee takes everything, everybody that has any information, comes up with a creative idea that will meet the criteria of why we're starting one. So it's not a, really, a one against the other. It's coming up with a solution that will solve the problem. And so we really have to keep that in mind because it will, it's not just moving chess pieces or those kinds of things. It's a holistic solution to the entire problem.
Through your Chair Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope. You're absolutely correct. When this was looked at, the area of Burlington met the criteria for a park. And there were two areas out of five. It only has to be one. And you could argue that it might even be four out of the five that it met. We're obliged. We, how do we justify not doing it when it meets the criteria? So.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. I'm getting closer to the end. So I would just like to ask through Chair Amos, to the Director, there's a couple of points of clarification in the report and that I would just like to ask a specific question on. Appendix six, and unfortunately, I don't have a page number. Option 19, which is the option that we're discussing. What I was concerned with is that the impact on elementary schools doesn't reflect the feeder schools that fall into Burlington Central. And it doesn't do that for the Aldershot experience either. But I'm more concerned about a comment that says, impacts on elementary schools, Burlington Central Elementary to have a split grade eight cohort between Aldershot and Nelson High School. And so my question is, what does that mean? And how is this relevant, this conversation?
Basically, what it reflects is that the grade eight students for Burlington Central, if it does close, would result because of the boundary that those students residing east of Brant Street would now attend Nelson and then those west of Brant Street attend Aldershot. So you would, there would be a split, a cohort split in students. That's what it means.
May I just follow up, please? So I'm a bit concerned, confused, because earlier in this program, I specifically heard the Director tell us that the grade seven, eight elementary panel, there's no predetermination made of what's happening to them. So I'm just wondering, so.
It's just basically reflecting what the status would be under the current scenario. If it were to happen today, and there's, you know, you would have a grade eight cohort split. Does not preclude the fact that we may, as a Board, or the Board may move forward with a program and accommodation review. We're just kind of saying this is what would happen if this were implemented moving forward.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Yes, I have a question regarding the Park meetings, potential Park meetings if we approve the review. Would there be an opportunity to video or live stream those so that people who couldn't be in attendance would be able to view what happened? Will it be happening in this room, I guess, would be the question? Because if they're happening in this room, I know we have the equipment to do that, but I didn't know if it was part of the plan.
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Collard. We haven't got the location, I don't believe, but it would likely be here somewhere. We haven't worked out the location. As for live streaming and filming it, they are public meetings, but I, and we would have the capability. I'd be reluctant to do it without their agreeing to it. Not everybody would want to be all over. So it's a good question. I think it's something we have to investigate, so let me put it that way.
Thank you. I see no further speakers on this topic at this moment. Going once, twice. So this will be coming back on October 19th. And I just want to remind everybody, it's not about the recommendation. It's about a starting, a Park process. And I'd like to remind the community that's what it's about. The initial recommendation here is just that. It's an initial recommendation. It is not, it is just a starting point for discussion. And it will allow that committee to then bring in all the pieces and all the different schools will bring their own perspectives. And there'll be a lot of discussion and look at all the factors. And they will come up with many, 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 many different scenarios. with many, 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 many different scenarios before they decide which one to recommend to the director and then the board. So thank you very much for your interest, I'm assuming that's what most people are here for tonight. So we're now up to our information items for September the 21st. Yeah, okay. Why don't we take a five-minute break? So if you want to, you come back quarter after, please heed prompt. For September the 21st, 2016, the first item is staffing update. Executive Officer McFadden, report 16136 on page 148 of your board package. Welcome, Executive Officer McFadden.
Thank you. Through the chair, you have a staffing report before you that is provided to the board annually. It is a look back at how we did in our September staffing with regard to, in particular, the reorganization process. Despite the imposition of Regulation 274 in 2012, we have refined our processes each year to minimize reorganizations in our schools and the attendant disruption to families and students. I would draw your attention to, in, on page two of the report where it talks about, we had in September of this year, on the first day of school, 1,989 junior kindergarten to grade eight classrooms. And we had 33 classrooms only, or 1.7% with a daily occasional supply teacher in place. And there were 6,348 regular sections in our secondary panel. And we had only 41 vacancies that were filled with daily supply teachers on that day. So we strive to minimize through our processes, the disruption to schools by not having the permanent teacher in place on the first day of school. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions on this report for Executive Officer McFadden tonight? Trustee Gray, oh, sorry, Director Miller likes to speak first.
I'll wait till the questions.
Okay. Trustee Gray.
I'd just like to make a comment in regards to the upheaval when we have teachers changing positions early in September and seeing the results that our human resources have been able to put together and all of the statistics that they provided, I think we can all be assured that our communities are very, very thankful for the hard work that's gone on and the great predictions of class sizes and enrollments in schools so that we have less, less of that upheaval that happens in the beginning of a school year with changes of staff. Whereas it can be recognized that some staff might have to change because of quick decisions at the end of the summer where some staff are not returning due to a myriad of reasons and therefore LTOs have to be assigned. I think we can all appreciate that that is, again, one of those things under Regulation 274. But in overall perspective, I just wanted to comment that I'm so very, very pleased that such little change and influx has had to occur. And I think it really does reflect the fine work of our, of our human resources department and all of the work of our principals who are helping, helping with the enrollment projections in our schools. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Director Miller.
Through Chair Amos, thank you for those comments, trustee Gray. You've essentially said what I was going to say. But I do also have a request of trustees. Last week, you had a presentation on startup from, I think Superintendent Padra Barick and Superintendent Etoff. In future, next year, in terms of efficiency, I'd like to include this as part of that. So it's all together at once. If trustees would indulge, yeah?
I believe there's nods around the table.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. It's great to see that we're actively trying to recruit because I know that I've also often hearing young teachers are trying to get on lists, so I'm thankful that we have done so well. Trustee Gray said it very well. All right, so our next item is close the gap update. Superintendent Cullen, and I'm not sure who's filling in for him, or Director Miller, report 16131 on page 150 of your board package. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. I don't have much to say. I do, we had one question from a trustee, but I'll wait till she asks it publicly. The reports before you, we're on budget and the budget keeps increasing as the funds are added to that pot. So I'll leave it at that and questions and any I can't answer, we'll get Superintendent Cullen to, and he sends his apologies, he's not well and hasn't been well for a few days, so...
Trustee Collard.
Thank you. My question perennially is about Pine Land, the number one school on the list to receive air conditioning with insufficient hydro to accommodate air conditioning. And I'm wondering, again, what we can do to help alleviate the heat in the school. I know they used to have awnings on some of the windows, there are no longer awnings there, haven't been awnings there for a number of years. They have fans in every classroom, especially on the second floor, extremely hot in there. There's very little shade and cross breezes and anything that we can do to alleviate the heat in that school would be much appreciated, considering that they have been and continue to be number one on the list and cannot get the air conditioning.
Through Chair Amos to trustee Collard, I don't know the specifics of what Superintendent Cullen's doing. Dale will let him know. I guess the question is, how do you, do you want him to bring that answer back at the next board meeting? Okay.
Thank you, trustee Gervens.
Through you Chair Amos, I don't think you'll be able to answer this question. Some of the schools that were expecting to have air conditioning projects completed before school, I know they noticed it says, due to electrical upgrade, there's going to be a one-year delay. So a few of my schools are in there, Rolling Meadows and, well, Rolling Meadows is fine, but Clarkstale. I was just wondering, sort of, what, how soon did we know that there was going to be a problem? And because some of these parents have been under the impression that it was going to be in by September and it didn't happen and I'm, we're just learning now there's going to be a delay. And so in the spring, I'm expecting the warm weather to show up again and they're not expected to be until next September. So, and is there any, like, sort of implementation that's happening? I know that's kind of a weird question, but has it been partially implemented or is that there is no air conditioning, it's not happening at all until the actual one switch goes on and it all happens at once? I just, I don't know HVAC and stuff myself, so...
Through Chair Amos to trustee Gervens, you're right, I don't know. The only one I know about is Blake Lock. Blake Lock, there was an issue right at the beginning of the summer and they didn't have, they just couldn't let it done, so it's been delayed. The rest I, I really can't speak about, but we've recorded the question and we'll report on it at the next board meeting.
Trustee L. Harrison.
Okay, thanks very much. Through you Madam Chair, I have two questions. Question number one is just with respect to the comments column. It says on time and on schedule, which to some may mean a very similar thing. So I just wonder whether there is a reflection of budget that is meant to go in there as well and that may relate back to your introductory comments that they are all in fact on budget.
Through you Chair Amos to trustee L. Harrison, we are within budget at this point, but the budget is increasing as funds are added to the pot, so to speak. As you know, we got an additional $19 million in the summer from the provincial government and so on, so... But we're, there's nothing, nothing not within budget, let's put it that way. So there should probably be something there about budget.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question is just related to updates to the schools in this regard because the ones that were to get the air conditioning by a certain date, as trustee Gervens indicated, there was a lot of excitement in those schools. So I just wanted to see whether there's in fact a process that's triggered to update the admins in the school because I hear that teachers are excited or, you know, staff are sad because they heard there was a delay. So it would just be good for them to get timely and accurate information as well.
Through you Chair Amos to trustee L. Harrison, you're absolutely correct and I'm, as you know, we have a superintendent of communications now, part of that is internal communications. We've still got a lot of tweaks to do and a lot of things to do and one of the things Superintendent Etoff is working on with Marnie and the department is improving our internal communication, both through a memo system and getting timely information. The challenge is coordinating all because facilities brings this, then he's going to have to get it out, so he's working on that. But you are correct. I mean, we need to get that information to the school administrators who therefore, who subsequently should get it to their teachers as well. Rob, do you want to comment?
Yeah, I think you've, I think you've covered most of the major points. Part of my role is certainly not just to look at strategic communications between our schools and ourselves as a board and the broader community, but to, but to also look at our internal structures. And as Director Miller mentioned, one of those pieces is looking at an internal corporate memory system is what I would call it, where we're away of... memory system, is what I would call it, where we're away of capturing and easily accessing information in a timely fashion, which is much more effective, especially as we are a growing and larger board. The way that we operated in the past is not how we should and would be operating now and into the future, so. But I can take that piece way particularly around the specific area that you mentioned and look into that further.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. So, on the report's schedule, this talks about being a report from Superintendent Cullen and Superintendent Bierman. And yet, this report is actually just from Superintendent Cullen. And I was expecting a Close the Gap update from a numbers rolling forward since the $19 million came in for renewal. That meant we could put more money in our Close the Gap. So, it may be my misconception, but if that, that's fine. May then, I'm requesting that somewhere between now and revised estimates and/or the renewal list, that we actually have one of those rolling forward Close the Gap because so many things have happened in the last six months that when we made a motion to transfer so much money or to say, yes, go ahead and spend this much money on the Close the Gap initiatives, that number has changed. And as you say, the budget is increasing because we found more money of our own Close the Gap funds that were freed up by the ministry paying for things that we otherwise had to pay for Close the Gap. And it is hard to monitor without a report that allows us to do that kind of roll forward. So, the carryforward of what was on the motion that we said yes to and then the add and detracts and then what's left. And also, this report talks about the air conditioning schedule of the ones that were on schedule and the ones that were added, but it doesn't actually then have a number of, oh, no, by the way, these are the ones we still haven't done. So, again, it doesn't have, this is how many schools we have, this is how many have air conditioning, this is how many don't, once this fully is implemented. So, again, as an update, it's part, it's two-thirds of the way there, but it then doesn't also then give us a thing that says, yes, we still got to do this many, and by the way, this is how much money you're going to have to find to do it, which also then ties back into that update.
Superintendent Bierman.
Through the Chair, with respect to the financial component, part of the capital status report, we provide financials on a quarterly basis and included in that is a summary of the Close the Gap details. The next report is due on the October 19th meeting, so we'll have some information with respect to that.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, I have one question. What does CTG eligible upgrades mean? Close the Gap upgrades? CTG eligible upgrades complete?
Yeah, it's Close the Gap.
So, we have to go back then to see what that meant?
Yeah, to which ones were put forward as Close the Gap. But it's, I'm sorry, it was like Sunningdale for, yeah. Okay. Yeah, yeah. I don't know what it was, but whatever those.
We have to go back to the previous report to see what the actual upgrades were as opposed to we know that.
Yeah, you're right, unless we.
Unless it's air conditioning.
Yeah. Okay, we'll take note of that. We'll try to fix that.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further questions on this item, thank you very much for your report. So, the next item is the Administrative Center update. Director Miller pitch hitting for Superintendent Cullen again. Report 16130 on page 152 of your board package.
Point of order. Is there any way we could defer this to the next week when Superintendent Cullen was actually here?
Well, I guess.
Because I would like to have a discussion with Superintendent Cullen in the room and otherwise we'll end up, it's an information report, we don't get a second kick, review of it.
Would you like to make a motion to defer this to next week?
I would love to. Motion to defer report, whatever number this is, to October the 19th.
Okay, seconded by Trustee Collard. Is there any discussion on the deferral? Seeing none? It won't be on the screen. Oh, it will be on the screen. Just got to find it. Okay, all those in favor?
I'm hurt. Doesn't show very much confidence in the director.
And that passes unanimously. So, this will be deferred and be brought back on the next agenda. I think there's a few of us who have a bunch of questions about it. Yeah. Okay, so the next item is Administrative Procedures update. Director Miller, this is your own report. 16129, page 156 of the board package. The Administrative Procedures update.
We'll just put, we'll just put it off, the part about bodily fluids, till Superintendent Cullen's here. Before, there's two procedures, two APs, some minor changes in the bodily fluids, just the date change and the reference to generic board-approved cleaning products versus brand names. This is pretty standard, this is pretty standard around all boards. But there's a brand-new one and that's selection of instructional and library resources, and I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Hunt Gibbons to add any comments around that AP. It was you that worked on it, right? Or Tina? Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. It's largely just been updated in order to reflect a greater emphasis on equity and inclusion and diversity of resources and materials and to reflect that there are more resources from which to choose from in this day and age. But the spirit and the process remains the same in that if you were, for example, an English teacher who, together with your colleagues, found a new novel that you really wanted to do with your grade 11 class and it wasn't currently being done, then it tells you, if you're a little concerned about what's in it, there's a form you need to fill out, your principal needs to review, it's all documented. It's also reminding that our policy and our, sorry, our preference is that all students, if a parent had any concern with something that was being read, would be provided with an alternative. Because, of course, in this day and age, having everyone read the same book at the same time and the same pace is not seen as up-to-date, relevant pedagogy and that students should be given more choice and that certainly we work as partners with our families and if something is bothersome to a family, we work to find an alternative.
Thank you. I believe Trustee Collard has a comment or a question.
Yes, just a comment. I wanted to thank you for your work on this, for increasing the diversity of materials available to our students and creating a more inclusive culture.
Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to the superintendents. I was pleased to see the variety of materials. One of the things that I was just curious about is, a lot of times it says, "If the teacher thinks the material is controversial," or "if they're unsure." So, you know, I guess I'm, can often see three sides to a thing. What if the teacher doesn't find it controversial, therefore doesn't implement the go-through and get a second person to look at it, et cetera? Is there some kind of a PD session somewhere along a teacher's training to say, "By the way, these kinds of things might actually be controversial"? Like, something so that they kind of have an idea of the parameters of the word?
Yes, through the Chair to Trustee Harvey Hope, yes. So, most often that situation, if a situation of interpretation would come up in a course such as English and all of our subjects, including English, have instructional program leads, IPLs attached to all of them who act as resources and critical friends for those supports. The subject associations are also very strong, so when they're looking to resources, they're often sharing and someone who has found something they thought is wonderful, they're sharing that on a Google+ community with their colleagues across the board at other schools and they're sharing that with their IPL as well. And if the, and in the small percentage where something wasn't as thoroughly vetted, it of course always goes to the principal. And then, the principal in consultation with the family because what is offensive can be, is a very personal and subjective thing and that is why there is always that notion of choice.
Go ahead.
So, do we have a generic response to some of the students who themselves feel uncomfortable reading historically accurate information that these days nobody would dare to publish with those kinds of words? Especially in English class, there are times where they're reading what we could consider classic novels and yet some students are uncomfortable reading them aloud or even using certain vocabulary that is in some of these textbooks, in some of these novels. So is there a sort of a generic way that we say to the teachers how to deal with that? Because I don't know that the students realize they, if it means that much to them, there is an option for them to go talk to somebody?
Yes, and if you're teaching any novel, historical or modern, you also have an obligation to couch it in its historical content and context and that would mean educating as to what is going on in society at the time and not reading that in isolation to other things. And so what you're talking about is culturally responsive teaching and sensitivity and equity and inclusion, which all teachers are to be well-versed in and certainly student voice is growing every day. And if anyone had any concerns with that, they should be talking to their teacher or their department head or their vice principal or their principal. But the notion of historical context is very clear within the revised AP that you have there.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much for the report, Superintendent Hunt Gibbons and Salmini and Director Miller. So, we're now up to the board report update. Director Miller, report 16139 on page 161 of your board package. Director Miller.
Through Chair Amos to all trustees, the board ones are new reports. We also got one tonight that we'll be doing, right? I, I should add, what was it? Anyway, we, you'll notice that, I know in October 19th, Learning Center SWAT analysis is coming. I think the more Folsom report will be in February, March, and that's the monitoring report on how these students are doing. Oh, yeah, the weather procedures, we've added that to the report. The only, the other one, and I mentioned in my, and it's my fault because I didn't mention it to Gail, but I did put it in the Directors Weekly. The multi-year plan targets and operational plan in here, it's for October 19th. Given all that we've been working on with the park and all that, I'd ask that we could move it to November 2nd, or to the first board meeting in November and asked for any input and I didn't receive any, so I'm assuming it's okay to move that to November 2nd?
I believe so.
Okay. And that's it, unless there's any questions.
And there are a couple. Trustee Garbens.
This is more about the reality of, you know, the situation we're kind of in and looking at, that we have a boundary review study potentially coming to the board October 19th and we had a full gallery here that may show up again next time. Is there any plans for like an overflow room or anything like that? If Martin Street's going to be contentious at all, the thought of it being contentious, would people be interested?
Through your Chair Amos to Trustee Garbens. Martin Street may indeed be controversial, but I don't think the start of the boundary review process would be controversial. So, we're not anticipating a, I'm looking to Superintendent Newton, I'm not, we're not expecting a big crowd for that. However, your point is well-taken. We may have a bigger crowd around the Park Secondary School. I don't know what we do with overflow. I've seen it packed to the gunwales in there and. Yeah, so we, it's a point well-taken. We have a monitor out there, we can watch and we'll take a look at some other possibilities of what we can do. But we're not, we're not anticipating, no, on the mountain boundary review, so.
Yeah, just wondering, is there going to be a recommended scenario coming with the boundary review as well?
No, we don't have to, no, there won't be a recommended scenario.
It's not the same criteria that are needed.
Good question, though.
Trustee Harvey Hope.
Well, part of my query has been alleviated, but just a little bit. October 19th has eight different reports on it, one of which may or may not go through quickly, a couple of them may not go through quickly. And November the 2nd, until you move the multi-year plan targets, was traditionally based on the versions of them in previous years, not going to take very long. And there isn't very much in the October 19th, it's an action item that's going to flow over. So, I just pointed that out thinking that if there was anything that could rebalance that a little bit, I respectfully submit that we'd like to go home on the 19th and not the 20th. So, I just wanted to point that out because it happens every once in a while that it, that we get these heavy ones and sometimes with a little bit of creativity, we can, it might actually, some of them might actually be able to move. I do have one item that may actually add to the November 2nd, but it also will be very small, so it won't really solve the problem.
November the 19th is also very busy. Or 60. Well, it's busy.
Chair, oh, through Chair Amos to Trustee Harvey Hope. Why don't we take a look at that at Admin Council and see if there's anything? How about I move the park? Yeah, there's a couple we can move, but let's wait until we have Admin Council when Jerry's in the room as well and so we can have a better conversation. I'm comfortable moving stuff, but it depends on, right?
I'm not sure that people would be happy about capital update being moved. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. So, just a quick question to Superintendent Bierman, I think. Community Planning and Partnerships report slated for September 7th, not required. And I just wondered what the intent of that report would have been and why it wasn't required.
Through the Chair, our current procedure does allow for schools that are interested in major fundraising activities to prepare and present information to the trustees. If those projects are to be in excess of $50,000, according to the procedure, there's a requirement that the details and the plan come forward to the trustees. So, we do include it on the update or the board report update in case there are requests for such fundraising activities. We have not received any as of the time that the report was to be brought forward. So, as a result, there were, there was no report. However, again, as a placeholder in case some schools do want to begin a major fundraising activity.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers to this, thank you very much for your report. So, we are now up to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Trustee Reynolds.
The Center for Skills Development and Training sends their appreciation to Director Miller and Trustees Garbens, Collard and Gray, who are also on hand to celebrate women graduates in skilled trades on their efforts to continue to pioneer the changing face of skilled trades. Pardon me? And. And trustee and Harvey Hope, my apology, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Hello, Committee of the Whole, of course we'll meet again next week. Agenda setting, thanks to everyone who responded on that. It looks like unfortunately, the only time where we have enough people to forum meeting is tomorrow morning at 9:00. So I will...
9:15. If we're not going to start till...
We can, 9:15 because it's, it's, it's a trek for some, for some of us, so, yes, well, go ahead.
And my apologies that I can't be there, but I'm the chair at a regional directors meeting tomorrow, so...
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Yes, CAC held a meeting last evening, it was very well-attended. We had an update on the accessibility plan for the year. There was a call out to CAC members for need for members to represent on PIC and on the Accessibility Committee, and we had some very good discussion. It was nice to see Superintendent, or Superintendent, Associate Director Bog at the meeting, filling in for Superintendent Zahnfeld last night. It was very nice to see him back, sitting back in a seat that I've seen him in many, many times before, so it was a good meeting. And, and the Jays won.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Just a reminder to trustee colleagues that Inspire Awards, second, 2.0, it's time to check out the file, the shared file, and please, if you could have your comments prepared by the end of the week-ish, so we can figure out points of convergence or requiring discussion by Tuesday, so we can bring the recommendation to Committee of the Whole for confirmation, affirmation, thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through you, Chair. Yesterday trustee Grabens and I attended the Mental Health Steering Committee meeting. We looked at the work plan, some strategies for the upcoming school year, and there's a lot of great focus on building culture of well-being and mental health in all the schools and across all the areas, so with focus on all the students.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports tonight? Okay, I'd just like to remind everybody, the PIC conference is coming up, and it's, yeah, and if, it's October the 15th, which is just over a week, a week away, and if you haven't registered, please do, because it may, if depending on the attendance numbers, you may not be able to. Means no food. Okay, so we're now up to the Directors Report. Director Miller, you're not supposed to leave, but it's your time.
Thank you, Chair Amos. I have four items for the Directors Report tonight. The first one is Superintendent Trufan is going to give us an update on shenanigans of the website on the weekend.
Thank you, Director Miller, and it's my pleasure to give everyone an update, and if it was only the website that we had a problem with on the weekend, I will just briefly give you an update. At approximately 10:30 on Saturday, our virtual machines, which are our servers, stopped talking to our SANs, which is our storage area network. Those two devices need to communicate, and they ceased to communicate. So that really ultimately, in a nutshell, was the problem. Believe it or not, it's somewhat fortunate that it happened on the weekend, because not only our website, but every single system that we need to operate ceased to exist. Our information system, our business system, our staffing system, staff portal was not operable, of course, including our website. We had staff in as soon as we found out the problem from noon on Saturday. I was here on Sunday till about 1:00 AM. The person, the three people that I left at 1:00 in the morning were still here when I got here at 8:00 in the morning, and I do want to thank Director Miller for acknowledging those staff that were here all weekend to fix the problem, and so approximately at 4:00 AM on Sunday, we were back operating. So not, I know the timing was not ideal for many, many reasons, but we were up and running by Monday morning, which was really, really key, so... And of course, the one question that I always have, well, the email was working, and trustee Collard nailed it right away, well, that's our cloud technology. So I know the problem wasn't ideal, but we had a lot of staff working on the solution, and we are working with our vendor, examining logs on, on what was the cause, and hopefully not have that problem again. It will happen again, but we'll try to be as proactive as we can.
Please extend the thanks of everyone here on, to everyone involved in solving the problem, because we know it was huge, and we know how devastating it could have been on Monday morning if everybody'd come to work and nothing was working, so thank you very much to everyone.
I'll pass it on, thank you.
And I've already said my thanks, but we put out a media release as well, given the crucial weekend that it was, so that the community knew that, that we had a breakdown, and...
Trustee Grabens.
Thank you, through you, Chair Amos. I was wondering if there would be any way to, to find out if that, if, once we hear from the vendor, the cause, if, like, are we going to be, get a, like a mini-report? I would just hate for it to be something, you know, was it external? Was it internal? If it's external, we may need to look at cybersecurity issues.
Thank you, through Chair, to trustee Grabens. At this time, it does not look like any type of cyber attack or ransomware whatsoever. It was an issue with the SAN and the VMs talking our fiber optics, so that's really what they're focusing on right now. But we can say that, you know, it was not a problem of people accessing our site, but that's exactly what they're looking at, and absolutely, so if it's of significant, if it needs money, I'll come back. Thank you.
Superintendent Trufan, I saw a media release from Kojiko that we are switching over to them, and I don't believe trustees are aware of that. Could you share the information?
Certainly. If you recall, last January, February, I brought a report, a WAN report, Wide Area Network, they were the successful vendor. They've been working probably since last March. We have almost all of our sites up and running with Kojiko fiber optics coming into our building. What I plan on doing is giving a brief report in the Directors Report when our WAN is finally up and running. I would like to give a good news report, because with, with the completion of this project, we will be seeing a significant enhancement to our WAN and our internet pipe. So I would, I'm planning on doing that through a news release to our staff. You're all right, Kojiko was pretty proud to be partnering with us. I didn't realize they were doing that, but they're, they're very proud to be partnering with us.
Well, it came out through a technical paper, but because I have a Google search on anything HDSB, that's why I...
I got it too. They're pretty proud of working with us and happy.
Thank you, Chair Amos. Three more updates, two on the social justice side, and then, so the first one is, I put it in Directors Weekly about our MOU with UNICEF, and Superintendent Newton will elaborate a little bit on that.
Thank you, through the chair, Amos, regarding UNICEF partnership. UNICEF, as you know, is connected to the United Nations, and it is focused on children. And we were approached last spring to entertain the notion that the Board would officially sign a partnership with UNICEF in state emergencies, meaning when the federal government announced through UNICEF that a particular region in the world, or particularly in Canada, was affected by a natural disaster or a crisis, that we would stand together to say that we would help where we could. So at this point, that does not preclude that any other organization could not approach us as well. It also does not insist that each school must participate in any actions that would be required, but in previous experiences, the experience at Haiti years ago, a number of schools were trying to help Haiti, they felt disjointed, they didn't know how to coordinate their efforts. So by joining forces to have it as an official partnership, that schools or communities could turn to the Halton Board to say, how are you coordinating your efforts? And this in turn could direct some coordinated response to help school administrators or school communities coordinate their efforts. Next steps for that piece is for the Communications Department, so Frances Graham, who represents the UNICEF arm, will meet with the communications team here to put out a communications on how that might happen, including our website, and communicating out to communities if a UNICEF declaration was needed at the time.
Next one is, many of you saw, well, not many of you, I think all of you were there at the Leadership Conference, Push for Change. Oh, sorry, Leah, you weren't there, and Joe, and Jean wasn't there. Anyway, we, many of you expressed the desire to see, well, that we as a Board should do something around that Push for Change, when Joe comes through Halton, which he is, and John's been working with some principals, and if you can update trustees on what the plans are.
Sure. For those that don't know about Joe, Joe Roberts, he's a former homeless youth who went on to become a CEO who was on the front of McLean's. He started a national track May 1st, 2016, St. John's, Newfoundland, and he's going to end it in British Columbia, 9,000 kilometers later and 17 months later, and he's pushing a shopping cart, because when he was homeless, that's what he pushed around. So it's, it's, it's a huge commitment and gesture on his part. The his, we have a, a local, wherever he, wherever he's going, he has a local partner, and the local partner is, is Halton Children's Aid, because they also are very concerned and very involved with homeless youth. And he'll walk through Halton on October 27th. 50% of the funds raised, and this is what he does, he splits them, while, while in this region, will be directed to the local Bridging the Gap program, which supports 250 to 300 youth annually. And Bridging the Gap is a partnership initiative of the region of Halton and the Halton Children's Aid Society. And then the events that we have planned, we have, we have two events planned. What he does typically is he walks in the morning for the first half of the day, and then he does some kind of speaking thing, and, and Jackie PC at Craig Keelberger School was all over this right of the gate, and very excited about it, and, and so we're going to have an event that culminates there in the afternoon. He's going to walk through Halton, and they actually said, changed their route when they found out that they, that there was interest here, so they're going to change their route, so they're going to walk through Halton, and they're going to end up at Craig Keelberger. So for the elementary students, there's going to be the opportunity to go out and cheer for Joe, to fundraise, and they can also, also follow Joe as he comes through Ontario too here. For the secondary students, what, what they're doing is they have a fundraising goal, and they're inviting both Catholic and, and public high school students, kind of like the meet-a-we, you send 10 students from each school, and they're going to, they're going to, the, the plan right now is they're going to meet Joe at Hawthorne at Public School, and then there'll be a massive parade of, you know, 500 students coming down through and going in, and then they'll hear Joe speak. So that's the tentative plan right now. It's interesting to plan, because there's other organizations helping them, there's the OPP that's helping, but they don't do local permits, so you have to talk to the local police, and we're coordinating all that, and, and the folks at the Halton Children's Aid, and as I said, Jackie PC will be doing a lot of the organizing, and they're, they're on top of it. And we're sending out a link to the schools so they can, all the, all the administrators so they can get their folks going on this, and we're just, wait, sure, yeah, yeah, of course. Any questions?
Thanks, John. Last one is our ongoing busing challenges. I know we took some time at the Committee of the Whole, but there's been some developments since the Committee of the Whole, and Associate Director Bog, and then I'm hopefully done speaking for the evening.
Thanks, Director Miller. Trustees are aware of some of our busing challenges. I, I've been in communication with Karen LaCroix almost daily, and she let me know today that in fact we have slightly fewer drivers today than we did earlier this, in this school year. And it's pretty typical at this time of the year that we lose a number of bus drivers who thought this was a good idea, and after a month of driving the bus, they pack it in. So we've got people in training and ready to pick up routes, and we've got some that are leaving. However, having said that, a number of the problem areas, because of the transportation folks have a much better handle on the routes, on the number of kids, and those kinds of things, that we will be able to solve a few of the problems, starting on Tuesday of next week, for sure, some of those hot spots that were identified. One of the challenges that we've had over the last number of years, or we've had discussions about, is the shism buses. So I just wanted to talk to trustees a little bit about this situation, because it may be a way to harvest a couple of bus drivers to redeploy. So we currently have 33 kids riding shisms, riding buses for shism in Burlington and Oakville. And when we started to provide transportation for kids for shisms, we organized it such that in each of those communities, there was a big loop. So in Burlington, for example, you can imagine, I'm not sure where the loop starts, but you can imagine a bus starting at Robert Bateman, going to Nelson, up to Pearson, M.M. Robinson, up to Hayden, down to Burlington Central, and Aldershot, and so wherever you are in that loop, you get on a bus, and you ride the loop, and then you get off the bus. So what that looks like is we've got kids that are riding the bus, sometimes for a small amount of time, maybe 15 minutes, depending on where you got on and where you needed to get off, and others that are on the bus for 15 minutes. Some kids start at around 7:00, getting on the bus, and are on the bus for a significant amount of time. Others get on the bus and land at their school 40 minutes, 50 minutes ahead of when the school starts as well. So from a convenience factor, there's some challenges there. Similarly, at the end of the day, we have some kids that'll get on the bus right after school, but others that may have to wait around for 45 minutes, or, sorry, 40 minutes, I think is the max, to get on that bus, depending on where it is in the loop. So we've explored and looked at every one of those kids and what it would do for them if we gave them bus passes. So significant cost savings if we don't have a big yellow bus, which is what we use in Burlington on the, on the road, or a little mini-bus in Oakville. And bus passes cost about $18,000 versus, I think, about $46,000 for a big bus. What it does is there are winners and losers. So some kids, their ride time will be reduced, for some, the ride time will increase. The big significant piece here, though, is that kids currently have to get to their home school to get on that big loop, so, and our kids are living anywhere from a kilometer up to five and a half kilometers away from their school, a good bulk of them, so they've got to find a way to get to school to get on a yellow school bus. With transit, most of the kids are between 400 and 600 meters from a bus stop, and they can get on that bus at any time of the day. So kids that don't have a Period 1 class, for example, can get on the bus at 9:30 or 9:50. So we think from a convenience perspective, most kids will benefit if we were to move to a bus pass situation. And for the small number where it looks like it's really become much less convenient for them, we would look at some one-off solutions. So what this will do, it'll free up a couple of bus drivers that we can redeploy, and we think for the bulk of the kids, that this will be a better solution for them actually to get back and forth to school. So looking for any kind of trustee feedback or direction on that. And if, if folks are supportive, we can kind of get on that sooner than later.
So I believe there are some speakers to this, trustee Danielli.
I was just curious, at Opsberg Zach, we heard a comment that perhaps, actually, no, I'm going to ask you this offline, because it regards specific bus companies, so I'll ask you offline to be on the same side.
And trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. So I really support this discussion. I heard, you know, an interesting comment bubbling up, and I don't know if it was in the communities or at this table, but the, the comment was with respect to addressing the, the shortages of, of the bus drivers, empowering those high school students to, and engaging them to use the, the transportation services... those high school students to, and engaging them to use the transportation services will have another effect. And that is increased usage at the city level would, you know, cause them to reflect on how they're servicing students. Because really, they're going to put in different routes if there's a demand there. But if the demand is not there, they're not going to do it. So I think there's a, there's a spinoff. And I don't know if, like, I can't speak to each municipality, but I'm wondering whether that conversation could be had. Because I think there's a real benefit to both. Because I know in Burlington, I read in the paper all the time that, that they're looking to engage the youth usage. So, you know, we're a municipality that has, that really doesn't, our kids can walk to school, but really, that would be an amazing opportunity.
So I'm going to apologize. We're after 10. We need to take a vote to extend. So, and then we have a few more speakers. So can I have a motion to extend? Moved by trustee Graves, seconded by trustee Gray. All those in favor? You can do it on your... Trustee L. Harrison?
That's passed 10 o'clock.
That passes. Thank you. Okay, so the next speaker is trustee Collard.
I'm in favor of this as well. I think it teaches students independent skills. It teaches them how to navigate through the city. I know I've always put my own children on municipal school buses. So I think it's a good thing. And I'm wondering if a motion is required in order to put something like this into motion, into action, or if it can just be done. Because if you need a motion, I'll make it.
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Collard. We don't believe it requires a motion because it was never a motion that we would bust the kids in shism. It was just part of the budget process. So I don't believe, we don't believe that it requires a motion, just head nodding, really.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
I also fully support that notion. I truly believe that where possible and where it's convenient, we should be encouraging secondary students to be taking municipal transit because the municipal transit routes are sometimes equivalent to the yellow school bus route. And I also echo trustee Reynolds in saying that if we don't, to some extent, encourage and, in some cases, create the demand for the municipal transit, we don't end up with municipal transit. And I respectfully request that the route that is no longer there to get from OT to Lake Lock be investigated so that the students that go between OT and Lake Lock can get there. And that we create some kind of communication scheme so that we can actually work on that. Because I actually had, I don't get too many comments, but I actually had a busing one this week because we had a delay and apparently, you know, the cycle hit OT. And that's one situation where if the transit was still running in that community from A to B, and not just a school special that runs exactly the same time as the school bus, we'd have a backup plan, but we don't anymore. So I think this is a part of a bigger discussion, but I'll take 33 students as a first step. And I would like to know some of the, going forward into the budget process, I'd like to know the can we's, can we take whole routes off and give them school bus passes? And can we spec that out and see what would happen? Because in a lot of cases, that would give more equity to students. They would have the opportunity to stay behind after school for extracurricular or extra help, or take a period one spare or a period five spare and get home and get to what they needed to do. So right now, we actually, by having them only on school buses, in some cases, create less equitable situations than if we took the same amount of money and gave them a bus pass and then said, "Here's how to get to school," especially when the routes are identical to the school bus route.
We can certainly look into that. And we can have conversations with both of the municipalities down here, for sure.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you. I'll decline. My points have been made. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison. Are you declining as well? Trustee Gervance.
No, I didn't. Sorry.
Okay. Through you, Chair Amos, I actually echo a lot of what the trustees are saying, plus the fact that there's already buses running. And, I mean, there's, they're, us having, you know, another bus, we're kind of, let's, let's, let's work on our environmental footprint. Let's use those buses that are already on the streets provided by municipalities. The other bonus is that I'm assuming these passes would be useful at any time. So this would help actually students getting to jobs and other activities that are outside of school time.
Trustee Pappen.
Thank you. Through Chair to Assistant Director Bog. I'm just curious about the bus pass because I know most municipalities now uses, use the Presto card. And I don't know if that's what you're referring to, because I would think it would be even cheaper because you just top it up as you need it, right? I didn't realize that Burlington still had student bus passes. I thought they just use the Presto card now. But I think it's called Presto card.
And you may be right, trustee Pappen. I'm using bus passes because that's the language that we've been using, but it may be.
Thank you. I see no other speakers on this topic. Do you have anything else in your director's report? Seeing none. Communications from the chair. I have two. Earlier tonight, Vice Chair Graves sent around a copy of a letter that we just received today from the Peel District School Board regarding the concerns around newcomers and EQAO. And I would like to make a motion to write a letter to support their letter with the similar concerns around the newcomers and EQAO. Trustee, sorry, Superintendent Hunt-Givens can speak to this as well.
I would just like to thank the board, Chair Amos, for supporting this. It is truly an important piece, and it's greatly appreciated on behalf of English language learners everywhere.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules so we can deal with this tonight.
Okay, so we have a motion to waive the rules. Do I have a second or? Trustee Gervance. Is there any discussion on waiving the rules? Did you put waiving the rules in? You still on there if you're there? Okay, all those in favor of waiving the rules to deal with this tonight? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. So I would like to make a motion that we, that would, to write a letter in support of the Peel District School Board's letter regarding EQAO and the concerns with the newcomers. Do I have a second or? Trustee Collard. Discussion. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Yes, I would actually request a friendly motion that the motion is actually changed to non-participating students. In the body of the letter, it would explain that the newcomers are, you know, it's for that reason. But it actually isn't just to take out the newcomer students, it's to take out those who are exempt from writing. And to highlight the option two of the charts instead of option one, the ones that don't, that exclude the nonparticipate, I believe is the intent. And also, again, if the intent is to not highlight the blips caused by a certain group, then one would not want to further draw attention to that group in the motion wording.
Superintendent Hunt-Givens?
That's actually a very good point. Trustee Harvey Hope. For, I'm looking around the room and a few faces who aren't aware. We're talking about first time eligible students and fully participating students. So often, our English language learners are deferred until their language acquisition is stronger, which is wonderful and great. But the point that is being made here is that because they, they're not participating counts in the reporting of those scores, that then there is angst in the community because they're being seen to bring down those scores. And thus, we would want to spare them from feeling that they were in any way impacting those results and giving them the fair shake to write it on their own terms and be successful like everybody else is a requirement of graduation, if it's the literacy test or any other EQAO.
Is that a friendly amendment to change it from newcomer students to, to exclude non-participating students?
Yep. If I could jump in, I think that the letter from Peel suggests the same thing that trustee Harvey Hope is suggesting, that it's both newcomer students as well as students that have been, that have not written, that have been absent.
Right. But my point was that it's very important what our 16 words are in our motion that goes on the order paper is, even if we, in the letter or in the support of the letter, it includes both options, we, both groups, we need to make sure that our motion is very neutral.
The newcomers and the other excluded non-participating?
No, just, just non-participating students. Because the motion is to ask them to exclude those exempt from writing. If you're exempt for whatever reason, one of the reasons is you're a newcomer and you're not eligible to write yet. And other reasons are that you're not, there are other reasons. And so that's the point, is to get the second set of charts.
So the language here is excluding, the ministry considers excluding non-participating, and then that means absent and excluded students from its EQAO reporting.
I'm not, I'm not sure I totally understand, but I understand the intent in the letter, so. Trustee Collard?
I think I can shine some light on this. It's to not highlight the newcomer student in the motion, but to include that as a paragraph in the letter. So that we're just in the motion talking about non-participating students without highlighting that group.
All right, I'm good with that. Did you get that, yeah?
Point. We're supporting Peel's letter. We're writing a letter. The motion is, we're writing a letter, support Peel's letter. And the motion should, we need to find a way to broadcast our motions so that we know what we are.
Okay, so I accept that friendly amendment. Do you? Okay. Trustee Reynolds.
I don't know if this is going to blur this conversation, but my question was regarding the language. I get really muddled when we say newcomers. Are we speaking new Canadians, English language learners, or international students? And I think, so, well, thank you. Okay, retract.
It's okay. Thank you. All right. So there's no more speakers to that, so.
Dale's got some wording.
Okay. It's okay. Thank you. All right. So there's no more speakers to that, so.
Dale's got some wording.
Okay.
The board authorized the Chair of the board to write a letter to the Ministry of Education in support of the Peel District School Board's correspondence regarding non-participating students in EQAO tests.
Okay. So all those in favor? On your monitor. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I have one other. Amy, sorry, trustee Collard. Okay, I have one other item. I just wanted to thank trustee Gray for spearheading the 150 tulips for the 150th birthday and being the person who has planted most of the 150 tulips and all the hard labor and out there chasing the squirrels away. And so if you see squirrels in the sidewalk, anybody, please chew them away. We don't want them to steal our tulips. And that's all I have. So any trustee questions and comments? Trustee Reynolds?
Steering Committee for Join the J, I'd like to express or share their thanks to the Halton District School Board for supporting their event. Many students, staff, and even trustees, Collard, Gervance, and Pappen stood out for a number of hours in the worst timed rainstorm ever. And we had to keep being involved because the point was they kept wanting to collect numbers. Sadly, they did not reach their Guinness Book World Record, but through their efforts, 2,339 people came out in the, sorry, 2,334 people came out in the pouring rain. GREAT launched their campaign, their communication campaign, and GREAT community building. So thank you.
Thank you. And it was great picture. Trustee Gray.
Thank you. Just very briefly, I think all of the trustees here are very conscientious. We have an interest in responding to each and every email that we get and answering all the questions that come our way. We are always seeking to provide factually consistent information and messaging, and we want to have clarity, efficiency, and informative and timely responses all the time. However, as I start to see a tsunami of flow of emails coming our way, each of them seemingly copied to all trustees and requesting responses by all trustees, I have concerns. I have concerns for the workflow and volume. I have concerns that all trustees would be able to, on an equal basis, provide the informative and timely responses because we all have different experiences and situations in our lives. So I look for guidance tonight. I look for guidance. Is it the will of the Board of Trustees that everyone respond individually to each of these emails that are being copied to all trustees? Or is it that we would rather have one communicate going forward to the members of our community? I think we all value the importance of responding to these emails, but I really see that this is the beginning of an impossible and unsustainable practice. And I look for guidance in this area.
Thank you. And I've noticed from the emails, they're all advocating about one thing, and they're not talking about the actual motion. And that would be part of what a response should be, in my opinion. But trustee Harvey Hope?
Two pieces. Response to trustee Gray. Ward 3 Park used to get thousands. So yes, we do need guidance. We also will have an email that will be Burlington Secondary School Par, kind of, there'll be an email, I'm sure that will be set up, that will keep them all in a certain spot. And I would suggest that it's not incumbent on all of us to answer each one of those. It will be different for those that are in getting them from their own constituents, but perhaps, just perhaps, right? Anyway, my comments, my trustee comments, were, yesterday, I attended the Sisters in Spirit vigil downtown to remember missing and murdered Indigenous women.
Spirit vigil downtown to remember missing and murdered Indigenous women downtown Oakville. And I was very pleased to see one of our Halton District School Board staff members, Tammy Hardwick, was also there. It was a very moving experience. We had a special guest of Mayor Burton and our MP, P. Kevin Flynn, and I took the opportunity, trustee Danielli, to tell him, and trustee Graves, we need schools, we need schools, we need schools. Anyway, but it was a very moving ceremony, and Susan Aglue Clark sang a verse of Amazing Grace in Inuk, I think it is. And I think Mayor Burton tweeted a video of that, if you're interested. So that was a very moving gesture, and the town of Oakville put red dresses up on downtown. And so, I sent out a challenge, because the St. Thomas Aquinas Peace and Justice Club was there en masse, and perhaps next year, we could have a little bit more Halton student representation, perhaps, from some of our social justice clubs. And then after that, I went to the Oakville-Trofogger Community Connections Night, which was fantastically put on by our, the guidance staff there, that was highlighting all the options for post-secondary for grade 12 parents, and some parents that are eager to learn earlier. And I just wanted to say, I think we're walking the talk on the equity and the pathways, and the, it's okay to come back for, you know, a fifth year if you're needing co-op or more choices, or changed your mind on classes or where you're going, and also talked about colleges and apprenticeship programs. So I was really pleased to see that it's coming through. And I've told the staff there, but I also just wanted to tell the senior admin that I think it's trickling down, and that, I had been to that session for years, and it was, it was a definite improvement over the ones I originally saw years ago, so.
Your time's up, I'm sorry. Thank you for your report. Director Miller?
Thank you for that. To trustee Gray's query, I guess, I know the trustees around this table do their utmost to personalize their answers and respond to questions, et cetera. But I agree, you cannot possibly keep up with the emails that you're going to get. And the emails will take two types of forms. There'll be ones that'll be just questions, looking for information. We, I'll work with superintendent, well, superintendent Etoff and I'll talk. They'll be directed to the website once we get it up and going. We still don't think it's appropriate to have it up and going until there's actually an approval of, or not, of this process. The second one will be political advocacy and lobbying emails. I'm not sure what we can do about that, how we can support the trustees in that, because I think just keep reiterating that we're in the mid, that if the process is approved, we're in the midst of a process, and the process has to unfold. But as you're fully aware, and some trustees more fully aware than others, because they've been the subject of some advocacy and lobbying at this time, not always friendly advocacy and lobbying, I, at this point, I don't have any advice around those kinds of emails. But we can certainly sit down, well, Rob's got a few comments he would make. We will help with the information ones, and just redirect people to the Q and A, and we will get communications out about where people should go for the questions. But I do think if the PARC process is approved, and if we go through the process, and there is a recommendation that comes in the spring, regardless of what that recommendation will be, you will then be subject to many, many emails of a political nature. And so, Rob, do you have a?
Really just highlight probably two pieces. One is, as informal, or as formal as it may sound, there is an advantage to collecting the emails in a central location. So the communication that we will send out will say, please send, you know, any questions or queries or input to plan@hdsb.ca. That goes to our planning department, where we have staff who are well-informed, and they're the ones who are creating our PAR website. And certainly, virtually every communication that will be going out will be directing them to the information that's posted, and we will be collecting it, as we do with our boundary reviews, similar to that, all locating it in one location for ease of accessibility. Something else that we can put together to help assist you, and I think we may have done it in the Pine Land Boundary Review process, is provide some sentence starters, or hate to say canned responses, which, which you can feel free to use, or don't, or don't use. But it would, it would provide you with something that you can, I know you want to make it personalized, but the challenge is immense. And, and so, much like us as superintendents, we kind of develop a bit of a canned, you know, a canned response, because there's no, just no possible way that we can answer all the emails that come in either. So it's a bit of a cut and paste and a redirection back to, ensuring that people are informed. So we, we really do want people going to one spot, as you know, as much as I feel like my answer might be better than another superintendent's, or might be different, or might be phrased differently, our preference is that people are reading the same things, reading the same information, getting the same information, and therefore, there is equity, you know, there. So that's, that's another reason for it.
Yes, having been through what was a rather contentious boundary review at the beginning of this term, and at the end of the last term, I know that the community appreciates very much hearing specifically from the trustees who are impacted. So I would say that 11 trustees do not need to response, respond, but at least one of the four trustees impacted does need to respond. I'm not a big fan of the canned response, but if you have 16 emails that are asking the same question, or getting, or giving the same message, then it makes sense to make sure that you're giving them the same response, so that they can't say, I got this answer, and I got that answer, and they're not exactly the same. And, and I think it's okay to tell people, you know, I've had this question asked a number of times, and I'm going to give you the same response, so that they also don't feel that they've been ignored. And, and adding that personal touch in, like, you know, use their name, and when you sign off, you know, if they have given you personal information, acknowledge that, because it is important to ensure that people feel that they, that theirs isn't just one of 100, and, and that you've actually read their, their message. So I would say that having one or two really well clarified responses is far better than them getting 11. And I really wouldn't want to put all 11 trustees in the position of feeling the need to respond, especially when it's not from their area. That's just my take on it.
Vice Chair Graves?
My comments are very similar to trustee Collard's. Yeah, I wasn't planning, because, because I'm in a different town, I wasn't planning to respond to these ones myself. I would leave that to either the Burlington trustees, or, I guess, my question is, for the ones that are going to the trustees at HDSB, I see in some of the emails that are coming forward, there's some, there's some misinformation, there's some requests for information on how to become informed and how to help. And I'm wondering if perhaps we should look at a response, giving people information on what, what the process is, that could go out to, to at least the ones that are going to the trustees at HDSB, so that people can become more, more informed about what the process is.
Trustee Harvey Hope?
Thank you. I'm going to say what I said before, but a little stronger this time, perhaps. We will read every single one of the emails that comes to us. Every single one. Whether they're coming through trustees at HDSB, whether it's coming into a, what we used to call, when we were in first class, a different kind of thing, we will come up with a way to read all of the ones that are sent to the trustees. But it will become impossible to answer them all at certain times. It just will become impossible. And so, if, if there is a question, yes, you know, you want to answer the questions, you want to get them the information. And I hardly would think it's great if somebody can actually keep up, but I, I know what the toll it took on a few of the trustees, when we, when we had literally hundreds a day. And Burlington Secondary Schools PAR is a bigger process than any we've ever undertaken, with more schools involved than we've ever done. So I think this probably needs to be a different conversation to figure it out, once, once we get into the communication plan, and once the director has the information, and, but I just wanted to make sure that people do realize that even if you don't get a response, never does an email go by that we don't actually read the entire email.
And I would say, when you read those emails, my experience of Ward three Oakville, we had, I don't know how many, and I was answering many, many of them, but as you go through them, you see it's the same email. One person writes it, and a whole bunch of other people send it off. I wouldn't be answering them. So, I mean, that's me. I try to answer all my emails, and I generally do. Trustees will have to make their own decisions around that, but if I see 25 emails, and it's all worded exactly the same, I'm done. I'm not answering them.
Okay, seeing no further. Trustee questions and comments? Can I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Collard, seconded by trustee Gray. All those in favor? You go ahead and think about it. We're leaving you. Trustee L. Harrison's still thinking about it, too. You and Donna can stay, the rest of us are leaving. Trust, oh, there, okay. That passes unanimously. Thank you. I can't leave.